Which we finalized at least one week before the season begins. Overall, implementation is on track and we are seeing really strong interest or strong early interest from community partners. So, everything is going well and we're very proud of the work. And I always, again, thanks to Jack and Tim and Keith, who's there, working with all of our coaches. And thank you again to Commissioner Rucker and Commissioner Mens for their support. And we're very proud of what's, what we're, how we're making progress. So, we're looking forward to seeing how the season goes. And two more things, just want to just add. If you have an opportunity to get down to Graco Park, it's open today. It's an amazing space to see Spark Studios and our team down there. And really enjoy the annual report. It's a fantastic report. So, thank you for your time and I'll turn it back to you, President Bennie.
Thank you Superintendent. With that, I'll move forward in the agenda to reports of appointees to outside boards, commissions, or committees. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. I oftentimes forget to make a report on the planning commission. But, on Monday, on the consent, it was passed by consent, is our plans for North Commons. So, that's nice to hear and I'm just gonna add that to the public record. And I turned a corner and ran into Dana Leas, so that was fun.
Okay. Okay. Other reports? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent business. I do, I'm aware that maybe there'll be a couple of items that people want to pull. So, if people could put their lights on to pull items or otherwise move the consent agenda. Commissioner Alper.
Yes, thank you. I would like to pull Resolution 2025-75 for discussion.
Thank you. And actually, I would like to pull Resolution 2025-74 for a brief discussion. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, would somebody please move the remaining items as a slate?
I will move the remaining items on our consent agenda as a slate.
Is there a second? Second? Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, all those in favor approving the consent business, except for those items pulled, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And with that, I'll go ahead and move Resolution 2025-74. We'll do these in order. Resolution authorizing a three-year agreement with Placer AI in the amount of $105,000 for NPRB to implement a location analytics platform. Second?
Second.
Okay. I'm wondering if we could have some, just a brief discussion about this. Was reading the background materials and what I, I just wanted to maybe have an update on what this will actually provide in terms of data and information for the organization. And I see we have Ms. Hudek. Hudek, sorry.
I apologize, I don't see the presentation in here, so if you could give me just one moment. Apologies for the delay.
No problem.
Okay, so, for Placer, as a reminder, this is in service of one of the performance goals that you all had brought forward. And we are now in year three of said performance goal. And through kind of some discovery of, and research of some different software platforms, we did a bit of a trial with one and we purchased some data and found that that wasn't gonna be the best fit. And so, we are looking to go with Placer because as far as the items that are listed in the performance goal here with regard to estimated trip origin and destination, mode of travel, time spent in transit, and at destination and things like that that you all are looking for, Placer is able to do quite a few of these things. Think of the items in the list, the one that has been most challenging to try to find a software provider that can give us accurate information is the mode of travel one. They do have a sort of third-party set of data for vehicle-related items that we'd look to explore a little bit more once having a subscription. It is separate and so, at the moment, I can't speak in too much detail about that. But, I think we have expressed that as interest and if there was a way in the future as they continue to iterate to do that item, we'd wanna be able to, of course, bring that in. So, in terms of what this offers, it can really kind of do all the things you all are looking for in your performance goal. And then, one of the, I would consider it to be a bonus item, is that it does offer us some information about visits to a particular geography. So, we can give them our mapping information for all of our different boundaries for parks. And we'll be able to get some more information about estimated visits, kind of repeat information. And we can even do that with some of our smaller neighborhood parks, which is not a set of data that we have at our disposal at the moment. So, I know that that isn't in the performance goal, but it's a particular thing that, yes, I'm excited about and is a common question that staff have across the organization. And then, I also have a couple of screenshots to just kind of illustrate how it kind of looks in the platform when we did some sample demos with them. So, here's just a couple of things that, so you can see visually. So, there's this map that gives you a sense of where people are coming from and kind of, it's a heat map, so the red is where the higher frequency is. And this particular set of visuals is for Minnehaha Regional Park. So, as you can see, and it's not maybe a totally surprise, there's quite a lot of visits for kind of the central metro, but it does kind of extend out. You can also get daily visit information broken out by each day of the week and it can get down to the hour. So, that could be of interest for our events folks to kind of understand the cadence of if it's really busy during when we expect it to be for an event and if does it taper off or does it kind of maintain? And then, there's also this routes piece, so we can get a sense of where people are coming from in terms of the highest level of frequency for certain entrances and exits, I guess you could say. And then, the length of stay, there's a bar chart there, which is also in your performance goal. So, any other questions?
I don't have any questions. Commissioner Alper, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I just want to add to it about Placer data that you can show how long people are staying at an area. I believe you can set like a fence, a geo-fence, so you can target specific areas. It's really cool data.
Thank you for adding that. Yeah, I think this is, it's exciting, not only because it meets the, one of the objectives that we'd had during our strategic directions work, but also because I think it will help us understand really the demand for the parks and beyond even the counts that I think the Met Council provides for the regional parks or, so I think those are more estimates. But anyway, we may get some real data, so thank you. Thank you very much. So, are there any other questions on this item? Oh, Commissioner Alper.
Could I just add one more thing?
You bet.
So, just, just to put like, and I, just to give a concrete, you know, way this could be used, you could look at one of our concessions and set a geo-fence. And then, you could say, you make some assumptions and you say, okay, everybody who's within this area, they are, they are eating at this, you know, with this vendor, they are, they are purchase, making purchases here. You could, you could do that. Or you could look at, for example, you could even get parking data from using Placer data. And you, you know, you, by using some of the, the filters that they have and the options. So, it's, it's really cool. It can be used in a lot of different contexts, not just like, oh, how many people are at the park?
Thank you. Other discussion? Okay, well, why don't we go ahead and move this one to a vote then? All those in favor of Resolution 2025-74, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That, that motion carries. Someone would please move, maybe Commissioner Alper, please move the next resolution?
Yeah, I'd like to move Resolution 2025-75, Resolution Approving Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement COM 0008596 with Damon Farber Landscape Architects for work resulting in a cultural landscape study and an ethnographic study at Lake Hiawatha within Nakomas Hiawatha Regional Park in the amount of $201,114 and a new contract total of $1,155,459.
I heard a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I-
Commissioner Alper.
Oh, thank you. I would, I believe there's, staff might have a slide to share on what the contents of this, just, it's a big, it's a big contract amount and so, would be grateful if you could give a quick overview and then I have questions.
Absolutely. Here comes Assistant Superintendent Schroder.
President Bennie and Commissioner Alper, I'm sorry that Tyler Pedersen, our project manager, is not here tonight. And if there are questions beyond what I can answer, we'll be sure to get them back to you. In the course of our early work trying to not only advance the design and recognize water, the continuing issues of water management at Hiawatha, we've been engaging with the State Historic Preservation Office and trying to understand how, how best to complement the work of the National Register nomination that's been moved forward. So, this effort is really about trying to understand the relationship of this geography to indigenous habitation and occupation and trying to build a broader historic context that we can be using as we advance planning for the Hiawatha Golf Course site.
Okay, I think there was a slide that I believe staff had, but is that, no? Okay.
Is there, is there one?
Yes.
Chad? We'll see how well I can interpret it, Commissioner Alper. Not this slide. There you go. Okay, well, this is information that is reflected in the background information. So, the first one, the cultural landscape study, is trying to get to the understanding of what is, because it on this landscape when it was actually Rice Lake or Padepacene, before the golf course was developed in 1920 or '21. And, and actually extending that up until the current, because there have been changes that have been made to the golf course. And that becomes important as we look at the National Register nomination and it's, and as we try to make, as we attempt to make changes to the golf course, how we can align those things to be concurrent with changes that were there or, or the original design of the golf course. The second, the ethnographic, is more about the engagement around indigenous occupation. And you can see that we have significant work doing engagement with the fieldwork and interviews with, that we'll be doing with representatives of, of the Dakota Nations. And it turns into a Phase One Architectural History Survey, basically, that is the complement to the National Register nomination that will eventually have, be having to move forward to get permissions for changes or mitigations that we propose as a result of the design.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that. I guess, so what, what's the, I, I know what the end result of these will be and that was part, you shared that right now and it's also in our packet. But, what's the outcome that we hope to achieve just from all of this whole package together?
President Bennie, Commissioner Alper, we know that advancing the work at Hiawatha forward with a National Register nomination over the golf course property is going to be an additional task for us. We've, we've characterized it as, in, in the past, when this was first brought to us, that it's, it doesn't mean we can't make changes, but it does make change to the golf course more difficult. We're trying to demonstrate, as we tried to do in the long-range plan for the golf course, that there is a history here that's important that goes beyond just the golf that happened here, that the indigenous history here has been forgotten and we're trying to reveal that and bring it forward as a part of the study. What, what comes of this, I, right now, we can't say. We don't know what, what we might find as we move through this study. I will say that based on past historic investigations, like the ones that we had to do at Waterworks, this is expensive work to do. All the work is underground, covered over by not only layers of dirt, but layers of years of history. So, it is extensive research and investigation that's required. And that, that's, so I, I know the $201,000 is a lot, but it's not surprising given the geography we're dealing with.
Okay, so basically, my understanding is that we are, are filling a, like a knowledge gap that, that exists, that's helping us, especially with the national historic, with the nomination that's in front of us with historic designation.
President Bennie, Commissioner Alper, I should have said that to start.
Okay, okay, thanks. That's all I have. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Other questions, discussion? Okay, seeing no other discussion, I'd like to go ahead and take this to a vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2025-75, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. So, with that, I'll go to, I'll turn to the planning committee and some items coming out of the planning committee.
On behalf of the planning committee, I'd like to move Resolution 2025-42, Resolution Approving the Trailway Easement Agreement with Three Rivers Park District for the construction, use, operation, and maintenance of a trailway in Theodoreworth Regional Park and waiver of easement fees based on quantitative betterments.
Second?
Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, this one requires a roll call vote. Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Forney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Musich.
Aye.
President Bennie.
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
I'd like to move Resolution 2025-63, a resolution removing the name Sibley from the park and all park assets located at 1900 East Fortieth Street in Minneapolis, rescinding Resolution 2023-171, placing into nomination the name Shante Tinza Wenyah, hopefully I'm saying that's right, for this park, and establishing the temporary name of Fortieth Street Park for this location until which time a final name is recommended through an indigenous-centered process and approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Second?
I heard a second from Vice President Musich. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, this one also requires a roll call vote. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Forney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Musich.
Aye.
President Bennie.
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
That carries as well.
On behalf of the Administration and Finance Committee, I would like to move Resolution 2025-61, Resolution Approving a Maintenance Agreement with Minnehaha Creek Watershed District Regarding the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board's Obligation to Maintain Infiltration Basins Within Nakomas Hiawatha Regional Park as Part of the Current Trail Improvements Project as Set Forth Per Minnesota Statutes Chapters 103B and 103D.
Second?
Is there any discussion? I'll just comment that the design shows lots of nice BMPs and maybe at some point we won't be doing these agreements, we'll have our own authority. But, for now, of course, this is fine. That said, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2025-61, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And with that, cruising all the way down, we have our first discussion item of the night. We don't have our open time for another eight minutes. So, we will move to discussion item, Parks for All Implementation and NPRB Annual Report Update. And we'll welcome back Ms. Hudek and possibly Mr. Johnson. Yeah, there he is. Welcome back and welcome.
All right, thank you. My name is Ben Johnson and I work on the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board Annual Report every year since I was hired in 2015. So, this is my 10th year kind of working on the project. I'm gonna briefly go through this year's annual report and then I will hand it off to my colleague Madeline and she will go over the Parks for All dashboards. Now, the annual report and the dashboards are linked and we'll walk through that in a bit. So, this year, every year we pick a theme. This year, we went with Gold Medal Parks. We won the National Gold Medal for Excellence in Parks and Recreation Administration. It's the premier award in parks and recreation. We were all really proud of it and so, that was the, the theme of, or the title of this year's annual report. You can see the history. We've published, as an organization, we publish annual reports every single year dating back, or not every single year, I actually work the archivist, there are some gaps, but the first one was in 1883. And I went back and kind of pulled some of the old covers. Some of them are posted actually in the hallway outside. There's, you can see 1901, 1935, 1954. They're all on the Minnesota Digital Library, which is a great resource. It's also linked on our annual report page. So, you can go back and literally read every annual report, it's been scanned digitally and it's available online. So, here you can see the annual reports, if you just go to minneapolisparks.org backslash annual report, we have the 15 most recent ones in PDF form and then you can see the county library digital collections where not only all the annual reports are scanned, but a lot of really cool historic images. So, with that, as you know, we have a Parks for All Comprehensive Plan that was enacted in 2021. And so, in 2022, we redesigned our annual report around the nine core goals of the plan. So, we have our welcome and intro pages where we have some fun facts, a welcome from the superintendent and the table of contents, you can see yourselves there, the commissioners. In the back, we have data on our budget and our workforce, condensed financial report and workforce data. And then, on the very back cover, we compile some distinctions we earned throughout the year, headlined by the National Gold Medal Award. But, really, the core of the report are the goal pages. Now, each goal page has a two-page spread. We picked two kind of highlights to feature. Here, you see Goal Five, Expand Focus on Health Equity. And you can see the Community Gardens and Youth Line gets right up in a photo. Then, on the second page, we do four smaller capsules that are also related to that goal and then a smattering of statistics and maybe smaller accomplishments throughout the year that we highlight. And, and every single goal, each nine goals, gets a two-page spread. Now, our idea, starting in '22, what we started doing is that Madeline has this wonderful Parks for All Comprehensive Plan Goals Dashboard. And so, we highlight, we pick one or two stats, up to four different stats, that relate to that goal. You can see them on the page and then you can either scan that QR code or if you're viewing it online, it's clickable and it'll take you to the comprehensive goals dashboard where you can really get into a deeper dive of the statistics we were highlighting for that goal. So, now, with more information on the Parks for All Dashboards, Implementation and Tracking, I'm gonna pass it over to Madeline.
Thank you.
So, this page should have a triangle, an upside-down triangle on it, and I'm not sure why it's not there. But, just imagine, you have a triangle that has a goals dashboard at the very top, which is our highest level of information that we're kind of tracking for the comprehensive plan. The mid-tier is the strategies dashboard and then the finest level of detail is the implementation plan dashboard. So, for the goals dashboard, I just took a couple screenshots of where we're kind of at for 2024, because most of these charts are current if they are done on an annual basis. So, in Goal One, I put in here the estimated visits to our regional park system. So, as you can kind of see, we've been on a pretty strong upward trend. And then, in Goal Six, we've got one of our big-picture questions related to ecology and it's got two different charts on there, one for acres of managed natural areas and then the other for progress on resiliency projects in park plans, which has had a nice shooting up, as it were, for 2024, in part due to some of the updates to the ecological system plan, which you'll hear about in a little bit. And then, for the strategies dashboard, that's that mid-level, it's got two primary data pages. This is showing the priority strategies and you can see kind of how many times people have used those so far in the last couple of years through a couple of different sources. And then, the implementation plan dashboard, which is that finest level of detail, this is giving sort of the high-level summary page. So, right now, we have completed about 24% of the implementation plan, 38% is in progress and then 37% hasn't been initiated yet, which is about right since it's a four-year plan. And we are only in the first quarter, or I guess, second quarter of 2025. And one of the things that I would like to highlight for the implementation plan is we actually just added in the ADA Action Plan and we will soon be adding in a resiliency action plan, which is for some of the items in the ecological system plan. And if you want to see more information about these three dashboards, there's a Parks for All Implementation and Tracking page on the public website. And that is all.
Your timing's very good. We may call you back here, but we'll, we'll move to open time. And again, we have three timed certain items overall this evening, so we'll do them as they come up. No matter what we're doing, we pause, we hit that one and we, then we kind of keep moving after that. So, with that, I'll go ahead and read the open time rules. Thanks to all of, thanks to those who, of you who have come here to speak during tonight's open time, the board's open time rules are as follows. I will call on people from the speaker list only. Names are added to the speaker list by calling in before 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting or by adding it in person at the board meeting before 5:30 PM. The allotted time for all speakers shall not exceed 15 minutes. We have 11 speakers. I will give each person up to one and a half minutes to speak. The time may not be transferred to someone else, each person's time, and please watch the timer and stay within your allotted time. This is an opportunity for you to address the board. We are listening, but we will not respond. That said, please don't hesitate to contact any of the commissioners for dialogue and further discussion. To protect the privacy of individuals, please refrain from commenting on specific personnel issues or planning litigation. Discriminatory or harassing words directed at anyone will not be tolerated. And finally, each speaker is asked to state their name and address. And so, I'll begin calling from the list. The first name is Quinton Quartz, followed by Mark Erlinson. Mike Erlinson.
Hi. Quinton Quartz, 2400 Irving Avenue, South. Good evening, commissioners. I'm a resident of East Isles, here to speak on two important issues. First, I strongly support Commissioner Mens's resolution to restore park roads in the mall park and I urge you to support it as well. Thank you. Second, I want to address the false and inflammatory narrative that Commissioner Tom Olson has promoted online. In recent posts, you labeled concerned residents as privileged NEMBs. You've accused us of trying to kill the uptown mall plan for selfish reasons. These are not the words of someone representing the public in good faith. You weren't at the March 11th meeting where East Isles renters, condo owners, and homeowners came together to share their concerns, chief among them being the removal of nearby parking. This isn't about keeping others out, for them, it's about safety. For many, especially seniors, parents with young children, and people with limited mobility, being forced to walk long distances to their homes is simply unsafe. Your rhetoric misrepresents us, it stokes division. I ask you to reconsider both your tone and your responsibility as a public servant and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Erlinson, followed by Chris Meyer.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mike Erlinson. I live at 2809 East Lake of the Isles Parkway in Minneapolis. I'm here on behalf of the East Isles Neighborhood Association today, I think for the second or the third time. You know, we did a survey, as I pointed out the last time, and over 700 You know, we did a survey, as I pointed out the last time, and over 780 people responded to this survey. Not one person expressed support for removing the mall roadway, not one. I'm not here today because it's about parking. It is about public safety, as Quinton said before me. I appreciate the fact that Commissioner Menz is bringing this issue back up before us. We thank you for your leadership and the ongoing leadership of Commissioner Schaefer on this issue. Also had an opportunity to tour the area with Commissioner Rutgers. We appreciate your past support as well. This park is an integral part of our neighborhood. We've been invested a lot of our neighborhood resources in the park. We've planted flowers. We replaced all the park benches. We put a public safety camera on the mall this past year. We've planted trees. We pick up litter. There's a big litter pickup this Saturday on both the mall and East Lake of the Isles. This is an area that the community has invested in. Unfortunately, the CAC proposed in the past just was not something that represented the interests of the community, which is why we are asking you to put the roadway back the way it is. Some have unfairly labeled, as was pointed us, is this an IBB issue? The truth is, if this was a NIMBY issue, I'd be standing here in favor of closing the road. My home is very close to this area. It would benefit me. I'm not. I'm here on behalf of the countless residents that have come to our meetings, come to the meetings with the Park Board staff and expressed their interest in the survey. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Meyer, followed by Nancy Gross.
Chris Meyer, 601 Sixth Street Southeast, and I came to convey my disappointment with the resolution on the Uptown Mall. I want to thank Commissioners Forni, Musage, Olson and Alper for voting against changing the master plan the last time around and want to urge the rest of the commissioners to change your mind on that. When I was on the Park Board, this was one of the few small victories that we had to try to reach the city's VMT goals. The state as a whole has a goal of reducing vehicle miles traveled by 20%. In order for us to reach those statewide goals, Minneapolis has to step up and go a lot further than that. Transportation is our biggest source of carbon pollution in Minnesota. And in order to take that seriously, we need to move away from car infrastructure and the Park Board needs to do its part for that. And this felt to me like one of the most straightforward ways to do it where the land is primarily used for parking, for an illegal use of overnight parking. And we have an opportunity to transition that to more useful green space that would bring a lot of people for volleyball and other things there. There was a lot of excitement about it at the time that we voted for it in the plan. So I urge you to vote against the resolution and to support parks, not parking lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Gross, followed by Drew Baris.
Hello, I'm Nancy Gross. I live at 1427 West 27th Street in the East Isles Neighborhood. I have had the privilege of living there since 1993. And I'm also here to support all the other things you've heard from my neighbors regarding the mall and the roadways. It is a well-used, well-traveled road. We have plenty of lovely green space in our great park, along the Lake of the Isles, which we all utilize and in the mall itself. But we do need this roadway. It's very important to us for a variety of reasons. And I have written to all of you multiple times and I thank you for your support of trying to get this resolved so that we can keep our road once the sewer work is done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Drew Baris, followed by Kristen McDougall.
Good evening. My name is Drew Baris. I live at 2654 Pleasant Avenue, South. I've got a bit of a different topic than the previous speakers. Yesterday, during recess at Whittier Elementary, there was an accident where one of the light poles came down. As in, 20-foot-tall light pole has multiple lights on the top. Fell right in the middle of recess. Were only so lucky as that nobody actually got hurt. My understanding is that's Park Board property and there is another light in the same park that I feel is an equal risk to our children, actually a larger risk because now that they've seen one come down, they're actively pushing on the other pole. So please, take action and quickly, for the sake of the kids. Thanks.
Thank you. I see the superintendent taking a note on that. Kristen McDougall, followed by Brian Nalesny. I'm sorry, Brian. Kristen McDougall, followed by Brian Nalesny. Oh, Kristen? Brian? Followed by Craig Wilson.
Good evening. Thank you. Good to see you again. I'm Brian Nalesny. I live at 4424 Lyndale Avenue, South. I chaired the Southwest Service Area CAC, which made the recommendation of the mall and all the recommendations for the Southwest Service Area. Six years ago, we worked hard to get feedback from residents that live on neighborhood, residents who are on neighborhood boards, residents who are not on neighborhood boards, renters and homeowners. I personally walked the mall with the then-president of the East Isles Neighborhood Board. We implemented some of her recommendations. You know, space for the farmer's market that they were operating at the time, maintaining their flower plantings, et cetera. We added a way for vehicles to access the mall from the apartment buildings on the north side of Lagoon Avenue. In short, we compromised. We heard repeatedly throughout the process that residents throughout Southwest wanted the Park Board to provide park assets, active use, passive use, and to meet climate and environmental goals. We all understood that the master plan was a blueprint for future projects and that a small alteration might be required at the margins. Not that an entire proposal would be upended. Following the master plan would be the financially prudent and responsible way forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Wilson, followed by Jason Felts.
Good evening, everyone. I just, first of all, want to thank you all for your service. I know it's a huge sacrifice. I want to thank the staff. I want to thank Brian. There's so many people that have worked so hard on this plan. Me, one of them. My name is Craig Wilson. I live at 1768 Fremont Avenue, South, very close to the mall. I'm a licensed landscape architect and urban planner and I served on the CAC representing the neighborhoods around the mall, like East Isles. The process felt a bit like speed dating, 2042 parks. We had about 30 minutes to get to know and redesign each one. There were 16 meetings with roughly 1.5 hours, an hour and a half, of real discussion per meeting. That's 24 hours total. Divide that by 42 parks and you get 34 minutes per park. That time included staff presentations, brainstorming and design review. Everyone worked hard. As I mentioned, it was a solid first pass. But we were told future public processes would vet and refine those early ideas, which were very preliminary and rustic, to be gentle. What resulted for the mall is a design that overlooked key constraints like safety, circulation and fire access at a critical pinch point in a very dense neighborhood. There's an isthmus, there's a chain of lakes. The fire chief agreed. This is a solution in search of a problem. What's needed here is safe circulation and emergency access, not token green space
Thank you very much.
in an area already surrounded by ample parkland. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jason Felts, followed by Peter Schmidt.
Good evening, council. My name is Jason Felts. I live at 2934 Bryant Avenue, South. My apologies for a little nervous there. I recently moved there within the past two months. I biked up here, as you can tell by my attire. I like to explore the lakes. I like to explore the mall. I like to just get out and enjoy nature. Not something I thought I'd ever say 10 years ago. I am aware of the balance issues when it comes to safety versus green space. I do feel that I've seen some smaller fire trucks here compared to where I used to be. That's a good start. If fire trucks need to get in and actually put out a fire, as far as I'm aware, there should be enough, you know, green space and still leave the center part safe for trees to grow, which considering how climate is changing right now, I'm a little bit concerned about that. As some friends of mine may say, the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. Second-best time is now. I am aware of the fire potentials. I am aware of the safety. But if we don't take care of the parks and our areas now, there may not be an area to take care of once we get there. Thank you. I owe my time.
Thank you. Peter Schmidt, followed by Tom Hockenberg, I believe.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Peter Schmidt. I live at 2219 Bryant Avenue, South. I'm here again to talk about the Mall Park. I do want to start this up by thanking Commissioners Schaefer, Menz and Olson for giving me time on this topic as well. Starting with kind of the CAC process, again, I got to participate. Speed dating is an interesting comparison, but part of speed dating is also that when you find a match, you then talk about it more often. The mall was one of the parks that we spent many meetings talking about to make the compromises we addressed. And then getting to the fire piece, I know that's kind of the main piece of this resolution, but if you're reading that Fire Marshal's report, to meet that report's goals, you would have to remove the entirety of parking on this mall park. If you're getting 20 feet of clear space, there's no way to do that with a 14-foot-through lane and a six-foot parking lane. So it is fiscally irresponsible to put a road back in a way that does not comply with the thing that this resolution is trying to address. But again, coming back to that fiscal responsibility piece, a big part of the way our CAC process works is that if we have unexpected money come available or unexpected opportunity come available, we move a park forward ahead of where it would be in line. The same thing happened at the Seven Pools Park. That was an awesome project. That's a great park. It's a great amenity. This is the same opportunity where we have another entity that can pay for this park improvement, which means that the Park Board's funds can be used for different parks. It's a fiscally responsible choice. It is a better move for the taxpayers. This has been a great process. It was a thorough process. Staff have been spending a bunch of time refining this design. It's also a way to connect the Greenway, the jewel of our bike infrastructure, with the new and forthcoming Hennepin Avenue. I urge you to vote against this resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tom Hockenberg.
Hi there, Tom Hockenberg. Sorry for the bad handwriting. 1515 West 26th Street. I want to speak in favor of the resolution. I'm very much against removing the roadway. I would like to see the Mall Park stay the way it is. I'd like to talk a little bit about the difference between a bureaucrat and a leader. Bureaucrats are something that the system employs to follow carefully scripted rules. They're very important, actually. Sometimes disparagingly talk about bureaucrats, but they're there to follow carefully scripted rules. What leaders, like yourselves, are elected to are to lead. In this case, we have a flawed process. We spent 42 minutes on a park. You've heard from hundreds of people who would like you to reconsider this situation, hundreds of people. A bureaucrat would carefully follow scripted rules. A leader would listen to their constituency. They wouldn't just say, "We have a process." There was a process. It yielded something that you didn't like. Bureaucrats, of course, whether you like it or not, you got it because it's the rules. We're asking you to reconsider the position because the process was flawed. It didn't yield what the people who actually live there want. I've lived there 30 years. You spent 40 minutes fixing, changing this park. I've lived there 30 years. For the rest of my life, you want me to live with your 42-minute decision? I'd really like you to consider this proposition and vote in favor of it. I would also like to thank you for your service.
Thank you. And that was the last speaker that I called that answered, and so I'm going to close open time. And now we have our next time-certain item, so the timing worked out well. We have a public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing, but first I'm going to read the public hearing rules. Thank you to all of you that, who want to share your thoughts and ideas with us during tonight's public hearing. All individuals wishing to speak can sign up prior to the start of the public hearing today, April 16th. If you have not signed up to testify yet, please do so at the front desk while we've missed that opportunity. This public hearing will have time allotted by the chair. That's me. I will give each speaker three minutes. We have three speakers. During the public hearing, public testimony will be given without debate and only, and so we will listen, but we won't respond. We will not tolerate discriminatory and/or harassing words directed at anyone, so please ensure that all comments you make tonight comply with this policy. This board made the decision to follow Robert's Rules of Order, so we don't allow seating of time. And as chair of this meeting, I will call for additional testifiers at the end, three times before the public hearing is closed. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Public hearing to name the trail on East Bank of Mississippi, the Mississippi River or of Mississippi River between 8th Avenue Northeast and approximately 16th Avenue Northeast in the Above the Falls Regional Park, the Rick Wrecker Trail. And with that, I see we have our deputy superintendent in this role, I believe, Ringold.
You were right.
Is going to tell us some things and then I will call on speakers.
We have approached this tonight in too many ways and as a result, it's not liking us very much. So one second. All right. Well, I'm going to start because I know a lot of this presentation before and you all have had it at least twice. So we are here tonight for the second public hearing for the Rick Wrecker Trail. This, this public hea-, oop, and I got it just maybe in the nick of time. This is the second public hearing. It's actually technically the third. If you remember, we had one public hearing where we didn't have all of the commissioners here, so we had to restart the process and that process was restarted. We do anticipate that after this public hearing, the actual item will come to the board. It's getting more interesting all the time. Will come to the board in June. We're anticipating June 18th being the night that it would be on Planning Committee and then it would come to the full board after that. This was nominated by Rick Wrecker III and Stephanie Zebarth. She'll correct me a little bit if I said her name wrong because it's very possible. We have done all of the proper nominations, so we have to notify city council. We have to notify a certain number of staff. We have to notify commissioners and we have to notify the neighboring neighborhoods. The next slide I would show you would tell you where this is and I think you are all familiar with this. This is the East Bank Trail, as we've kind of called it without kind of a formal name, which basically extends from the Plymouth Avenue Bridge up to this location. Rick Wrecker, who this is being nominated for, was an avid runner. Spent a lot of time working to bring Minneapolis Public School children and Park Board children out into athletics. Did a lot of work, not only being a runner himself, but actually growing the running community and making, making sure that courses were properly distanced through his work with the US Track and, US Track and Field. There we go. Was a director of many events, received a proclamation from Mayor Frye for June 3rd, 2022 and also was a lifeguard at Minneapolis Beaches. So that's some of those pieces. The next slide would tell you a little bit about where we're at. As I said, this is the second public hearing. We will be bringing this to a vote for the board on June 18th. That'll be at Planning Committee. We have done all of our notification processes. So we've done the Star Tribune. We've done all of the mailings out through GovDelivery. And tonight, we're fortunate to have all of the commissioners here, so we are accurate on having everybody here for it to be a complete public hearing. I will let this kind of think and cook a little bit and I think you can go into the actual public hearing.
Thank you very much. And I only opened the public hearing. I think I got a little ahead of myself, but we have three people signed up. So I'll give each person three minutes. The first name is very difficult to read, but it's maybe Adam Zebarth? Eric? Aaron? Okay.
I'm Aaron Zebarth.
I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, thank you. My handwriting's often been an issue. But Steve Highland, who 18 months ago shared publicly in this room, was not able to be here tonight due to an out-of-town funeral, so I'm sharing on his behalf. There's a lot of us representing Rick tonight with buttons or name tags as well. Steve writes, "In baseball, we have memorials for Maurer and Puckett. Next to our wonderful ice arena, we have Herbie's statue. When we think of football, we think of Bud Grant, well-deserved Minnesota icons. No one, though, deserves high-profile recognition in the sport of running more than the great Rick Wrecker." I love this effort to recognize Rick Wrecker, such a dedicated, super-active, well-known runner like no one else. So please join the thousands who simply support the idea of..." So please join the thousands who simply support the idea of naming the trail near the river and name it the Rick Wrecker Trail," from Steve Highland.
Thank you. The next name is Stephanie Wrecker Zebarth. And then the next one will be Senator Doran Clark.
Here we are again, over three years after lifelong Minneapolis resident Rick Wrecker died of cancer. He was a Minnesota running icon, truly. He was among the pioneers who brought recreational running to Minnesota, enduring harassment and safety risk from passing motorists or residents who didn't understand why people would run without being chased. He not only modeled the value of running, he promoted it. He was among the legends who built the Minnesota running community from the ground up. He directed races, measured and certified courses, officiated road races and track and field events, plus coached and encouraged individual athletes raging from world-class to novice. I am Stephanie Wrecker Zebarth, the middle child of Rick Wrecker. I am here tonight to help bring about his dying wish that the trail he created with his own two feet over decades of running in Minneapolis would bear his family name. Over the course of this multi-year process recently described, you have heard from many people from various parts of the city and very diverse walks of life who have all stated the same thing, that Rick Wrecker is a worthy namesake for this trail. We heard last time that you expressed concern that Minneapolis Park Trails do not typically get named after people. This situation is truly exceptional. Rick was a lifelong resident of Minneapolis, aside from just a few years in the suburbs when he was married to my mom. He loved Minneapolis. He loved the parks. He ran the trails. He ran the parks. But as one of the earlier downtown residents of the modern era, Dad got out of bed before the sun, laced up his running shoes, and ran in the grass along the river. He gradually wore that grass into a dirt trail, which others began to use as well. He ran it almost daily for more than 30 years, so he literally created the path that was just discussed tonight. He told many adventures from running along this path, and he proudly kept his grids, his kids and grandkids, informed of its development, which eventually included the park system incorporating it in to the Minneapolis Parks and Rec. Dad wished the trail to be named the Wrecker Trail as a family legacy, but all of those of us in the family unanimously agree it should be the Rick Wrecker Trail because he is the one who created it and earned the legacy within the park system and the running community of Minneapolis, Minnesota. So we request, we respectfully request that you honor this legacy, but far more significantly to everyone, including my dad, would be the inspiration, the story of the trail, what offered to the Minneapolis Parks patrons. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Senator Doran Clark, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. Doran Clark, 22nd and Benjamin, Northeast Minneapolis. Key values of ours, Minneapolis, all of the Minneapolis Park and Rec Board are equitable and connected. That's Rick Wrecker. He understood how running, and especially trails, connect all of us. Perhaps that's why he ran everywhere and helped both formally and informally figure out where trails on the river should and shouldn't be. He's been running the, the river since, well, I think the 1950s. And we can all be proud to put Rick's name on the trail. As I said, Minneapolis Park Board, Park and Rec Board's values include equitable and connected. Before Rick died, he asked me to plan his after-party. Not a funeral, an after-party. He wanted everybody to get together and have a good time and talk about running. And so I said yes, and then I did what I normally do, which is I tend to over-plan and over-investigate and over-figure out what we need to do. And in part, I was looking for where are there stories that shouldn't be told? Stories that would make me wince. And everybody I talked to said, "Those stories don't exist." You don't understand, Doran. Rick was doing the inclusive, the equitable, and the connecting things before we even knew what those words were. He was getting people involved in opening doors for women in track, for people who are underrepresented in track and running, before we knew that we needed to intentionally do that. Rick was someone who knew before we knew that we needed to do that. So I ask that when you think, hmm, should we name this after someone? Rick is someone that we can proudly say this trail should be named after. So I encourage you, when it comes to that June 18th vote, to vote to approve the Rick Wrecker Trail. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our, that was our last speaker, and with that, I'll close the, the public hearing, and I'll move back to where I was in the main agenda. So we had the discussion item for the Parks for All Implementation and, and NPRB Annual Report update. Ms. Hudek was just finishing, and I know she is happy to stand for questions. Oh, and Mr. Johnson as well. Are there any questions from the Commissioners? Okay, I see no questions. Thank you very much for the presentation. And we'll move to the next item, which is also a discussion item. This is the Ecological System Plan Implementation Update. And we're seeing, we're waiting for Director Wiseman. Director Julie, Julie Wiseman. We don't see. Ms. Hudek, are you doing the Ecological System Plan update?
I am. You get me for a third time today.
Okay, wonderful. And we're having a slow computer situation. Yeah.
That was what that bell was.
It's a little more startling.
That's what I'm.
I don't think it's in there because we didn't open it yet.
All right.
Point of information, Secretary Ringold. You may want to reboot that workstation. The messages it's giving you is indicating that there's an authentication issue between the machine and the network.
Thank you for that, Vice President Musich. I think it's okay that we take the time we need to get it up and running, so.
This one actually doesn't reboot in the same way as the other ones because of where it's at, so.
I have it up on my computer. Should I just grab it?
Yeah, let's try that. Yeah.
Is there?
It won't shut down.
We could. Is it possible? Does someone else, someone have a laptop and they could at least just, we won't have a visual?
She went to grab it.
Okay. While this is going on, actually, I think all the Commissioners are here. Vice President Musich suggested we go to petitions and communications. So let's do that, and I'll start, since I'm making eye contact with Commissioner Alper, I'll call on her first.
Great. Well, I want to just say, I know I was absent last week with spring break for Minneapolis Public Schools, and my family and I, we had the opportunity to visit not one, but two incredible national parks. One of them is the Presidio in San Francisco. And something I want to just bring up about that is that it is 100% self-funded. It receives no support from the federal government, which I think is really fascinating. And the way they do it is they have a hotel on site. They have housing. They have businesses. And it is incredibly beautiful. They've transformed old Army barracks into natural, you know, but like, they've, they've kept up the historic buildings. They've transformed parade grounds into natural areas. They've created this whole stormwater management system. They've recreated a marsh that used to exist. It's, it's really great. I highly recommend visiting. And then Yosemite was the second park that we went to, and this was also fascinating. It's, it's like a mini-city. They have a medical clinic. They have police. They have concessions. They have their own transit system. They have housing for the, all the employees that, that work, that work there. So it was just, it was really interesting to see another high caliber, you know, other high caliber parks at a completely different level. So I wanted to share that with you. I also wanted to share that the Matthews Park Ice Rink petition that I believe many of you have received, as I have as well, now has 571 signatures asking Commissioners to save this ice rink. And I think what it really shows by the fact that people are mobilizing in the community on this rink and Lake of the Isles ice rink and other ice rinks like Powderhorn, is that decisions around rinks were made quickly last year, and they were entirely staff-based. Looking at inter, internal indicators like maintenance and costs, and those are important, very important. But the thing is, we pride ourselves as an agency on having robust community engagement and just processes, and none of this was done here. I, I, I just think that we, we need to rethink our ice rink strategy in a more strategic and less haphazard manner. Right now, we've got winners. We've got losers. And that's not fair because we're, we're not able to show how we made a decision. We didn't, you know, things to consider, just throwing these out here for consideration, might be things like, is there a school? What's the population around there? You know, what, what are the demographics? Is there a rec-plus site? What about geographic equity or, you know, climate? Should we, should we have lake ice at all? And this, this was not included in the factors for making decisions around ice rinks. So I would like to see our agency do this hard but important work. And yes, it, it is April, and it's going to be summer soon. But before you know it, I hate to tell you all this, it's going to be winter again. So, so now is the time to do this work. And it, we owe it to our constituents to have a solid rationale for why we are closing certain ice rinks and why we are leaving other ones open. And right now, we have no leg to stand on. And then, last but not least, I just want to share with you that I have made the decision not to run again. It's been an honor to serve on this Board. But as you can imagine, it's a challenge having a full-time job in this role. And in fact, you know, it takes, as, as all of you who are staff in the room, who, who serve on this Board know that it takes you away from important occasions, like my daughter's birthday tonight. So I just want to say thanks and let you all know that.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Commissioner Schae, Schaefer. Yeah?
Commissioner Alper, thank you for letting us know, and we will miss you. I won't be here either, I guess, so we'll, we'll, maybe we can go out to lunch or something. But yes, I would like to concur with your comments around the ice rinks. And I think at our upcoming Budget Committee of the Whole, end of April, maybe we can, the two of us, Assistant Superintendent Barrick, possibly we can get together. But I think we should begin to address that now with our initial budget work. And, and if there's anything that we can do to make that day easier or make that process go more smoothly, I'd be all on board on working behind the scenes. Not to up you, but you know, it's a regional park, and we have 3,000 signatures on our petition. But we're--
They're hard at work. Neighbors are hard at work.
But really, I think you raised some important issues, so I, let's, let's continue to dialogue about that. I also want to know that if anybody hasn't heard about the Cougar event through either NPR or KAR11 or, you know, our GovDelivery, it is the talk of the town. So April 26th, a week from this Saturday, there will be the unveiling of the, you know, the, I don't know if he has a name yet, but the, the Cougar, the NPRB Cougar. And we're really excited about it. It'll start at 10:00 a.m. The Taxidermist Meadow will be there at 10:30 to kind of introduce the situation and how she did all this great work. And there'll be ice cream and lots of fun activities for Cougar, Cougar activities for kids. Trash Boom was installed at Lake of the Isles today and Earth Day on Saturday. That's it.
Thank you. Before we continue with Ps and Cs, oh, here we go. I, I would like to pause Ps and Cs, come back to that, and now turn to Ms. Hudek for the, we're really excited to see this Ecological System Plan. So let's do it.
I intentionally had some anticipation mounting.
Good job.
Presentation for you. Okay, so I am now going to give you an update on the Ecological System Plan and the implementation of it. Just got to figure out my system here. Okay, so as a reminder, Ecological System Plan, it's one of our system-wide plans. It's environmentally focused. It's the first of its kind, and the plan was adopted in November of 2020. Inside the plan, there are four main chapters, and they're organized by water, air, land, and life. And then it concludes with a chapter that has an index of all the goals and strategies that are all organized. They're very colorful. I have a screenshot here of the goals, strategies, and then recommendations. And then there's also departmental responsibility charts, which outline which departments across the organization have some connection to each of the different strategies and recommendations to help with implementation. And then there's also some charts in there that show place-based concerns by some of the different types of environmental concerns that we have, including things like air quality, stormwater, things like that. So I'm giving this presentation to you all because I am the plan champion for the Ecological System Plan. And as a plan champion, there are kind of four key things that we are tasked with doing. Knowing the plan, guiding the implementation of it, connecting people or staff to shepherding things forward, and then also tracking the progress of the plan over time. And then, in addition to that, sometimes plan champions will also take on certain aspects of the plan and implement them themselves. So on the screen before you is the goal, the last goal and collection of strategies related to adaptability and accountability and implementation, and kind of adapting over time, since the environment is ever-changing. And so we wanted to kind of reflect that a little bit within some of these strategies. So in 2024, one of the things that I focused on were Strategies 48, 49, and 50. And part of the way of kind of focusing on that was by convening a cross-departmental group to discuss implementation and kind of these core topics around what we're doing, kind of coordination and things like that, and plan updates. Because one of those strategies is around looking at the plan and seeing if there's anything you have to update on kind of a three-year basis and more in a technical way, not having a broad community engagement kind of way. So through a series of three meetings with representation from all departments across the organization, we discussed the plan, kind of did some implementation updates. There were 18 strategies and recommendations that had some updates. And one of the biggest kind of changes, I would say, is to the departmental responsibilities chart. We actually pulled out, some of the departments were kind of grouped by their division, and we pulled it out so that there's now a column for each department. and we pulled it out so that there's now a column for each department. So it's even clearer as to which of the departments within a division have a level of responsibility. We also discussed milestones, which relates to one of the strategies, and had some discussions around possibilities for that. And then, as far as coordination goes, there was discussion about this idea of creating a resiliency committee so that beyond these kind of discreet meetings to really focus on a couple of things that were being advanced, that there could continue to be discussion for the many strategies and recommendations in the plan. And so through these meetings, there were a number of department reps. And so it was really, I was really thankful for all of their feedback and ideas, and those are on the screen here. And so following these meetings, I went to the executive team and kind of discussed this idea of a committee, a resiliency committee, and got the green light. And so in November of last year, we started to meet as a committee. And it's again a cross-departmental group. There's representation from each department, even ones that don't have as much to do in the plan. And so one of our first focuses here is on creating a resiliency action plan, which will eventually feed into that implementation plan dashboard that I presented on earlier. And that's to really try to work on advancing some specific actions related to strategies and recommendations in the plan. And that's beyond just kind of the day-to-day things that are already happening within each department, because there's a lot of work that we do on a regular basis. Planting trees, maintaining, and updating our natural areas and things like that. So with the resiliency action plan, it will look similar to the Racial Equity Action Plan page within the Implementation Plan Dashboard. I'm going to have that up on the screen for you to just kind of give you a visual. And so thematically, it'll just be about environmentally focused items. And so it'll look really similar to this when it's all ready to go. And we've been meeting this year, and we are, I think, fairly close to getting to our action plan. So I'm hopeful that we'll have something by the end of summer to be able to add into this dashboard. And then, in addition to the resiliency committee and all the work that it's doing on developing this implementation plan, one of the other items in that accountability goal is around having an implementation checklist and providing it to you all on an annual basis. So this year is the inaugural year of the Progress Report for the Ecological System Plan. And it was submitted as a PNC for this meeting, so you can have that for your light readings. It's about 29 pages. Try to keep it succinct, but also give you the key pieces of information. And the kind of highlights of what's in there are the completed strategies or recommendations, the partially completed things, and there's typically some notes around what that is exactly. The things that are in progress. And then there's also this ongoing category, because there are just some strategies and recommendations that we are continuing to do on an ongoing basis. And so for that, there are just some highlights for you to get a sense of the many things that we're doing, but not everything, because that would be probably hundreds of pages long. So trying to be succinct, but give you the details. And with that, I am done.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, I don't see it. Oh, I see Vice President Musich.
Thank you, President Bennie. When that dashboard goes live, could you send us all a link, letting us know that it's out there so that we can familiarize ourselves with it at that time?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you and thank everyone who's been a part of this, because the more I sit in these things, the more I realize how outward-facing, like data dashboards are really useful for community members and people who love our parks and all that kind of stuff, and shows the work that we're doing. So I think that's really cool that's coming online. Thank you.
And I would echo that, and just appreciation to all the work that goes behind this, and really the emphasis on these priorities are important. I feel very important to the citizens of Minneapolis. So thank you for finding a way to visualize this work to the public. Thank you. And with that, I think we'll move to the next discussion item, which is the 20-Year Neighborhood Park Plan, NPP 20, 2024 Annual Report Presentation. And this one is Director Wiseman. I was confused. Here she comes. Welcome.
Good evening, President Bennie and Commissioners. We're here to report on the 2024 Annual Report of the 20-Year Neighborhood Park Plan. The report that's available on our public website at wwwminneapolisparks.org backslash NPP 20 includes the executive summary, history and background, and then information on the NPP 20 rehabilitation and capital investments. NPP 20 is an historic agreement that was agreed upon through concurrent ordinances back in 2016. This is the eighth year of the implementation of this important investment in our neighborhood parks. The NPP 20 funding was divided into two areas. The first was property tax investment in operations, maintenance, and repair of our assets. And it included a general fund property tax levy that increases with our property tax levy increase each year. So it started at $3 million back in 2017. And you'll see on this chart that in 2023, it was 3.88 million. And now in 2025, it's 4.43 million. On the next chart on this slide, it shows the rehabilitation and capital investments for 2023 through 2025 of 11.8 million, 12.2, and 12.6. And the green part of the chart is the rehab with capital investment represented in blue. So tracking and reporting requirements with the ordinance, we must report to the Board and the City Council annually with the results each year. So this report reports results through December 31st, 2024. And by ordinance, we are including information about 2023, 24, and 2025. Our guaranteed annual minimum amount for rehabilitation and capital investment portion of NPP 20 is adjusted every five years. So the last adjustment was done in 2029, or 2021, and it covered 2022 to 2026. So you'll see on this chart of our capital program, the 13.1 million in 2026 is shown for the out-years, but we are currently in an adjustment negotiation period with the City of Minneapolis and the Park Board. We have submitted to the City of Minneapolis our proposed amount for 2027 through 2031. And we are just waiting on a response from the city. But we must have concurrent resolutions passed by the end of this year in order to set that guaranteed minimum amount for that next five-year period. I'm now going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Michael Schroeder.
Thank you, Julie. President Bennie, Commissioners, I'm going to run through the capital and rehab programs. And there's a lot of statistical information here that I can go back and review if needed. Just to review, the capital improvement program that we set out is a six-year annual budget process, which you've all been through several times. For the capital improvements in our neighborhood parks, and actually, on a regional park, we use an equity ordinance that was passed concurrently with, or at the same time as the Neighborhood Parks Plan. All neighborhood parks, all of the neighborhood parks, including the undeveloped parks, will eventually benefit through some kind of funding before we run out of the program in 2036. The rehabilitation program was set up to, as listed with the dot points on the left, to enhance park safety, to meet some of those codes that have changed since the park assets were first implemented. And significantly, like right off the bat, addressed critical failures. I think there was a failure in a roof beam at Nakoma that we discovered just after approving the program, that we were able to have funds then to be able to directly work on restoration and repair. Importantly, the rehabilitation program is directed to those features of the parks, in parks, that will not be subject to capital improvements for some time. So in a way, the rehab program allows us to perpetuate improvements in parks until such time as they can receive a capital improvement. There's a process. Staff goes out and maintains an inventory of all the park assets, assessing their condition, and ranking those for needs for implementation, and prioritizing them across multiple factors, like the neighborhoods, the use, the age of the structure. And if you go all the way through the list, they also look at it, I think, in terms of equity, when there seems to be a tie in terms of products that we'll apply dollars to. These are the rehab categories. As Director Wiseman noted, we reviewed 2023, 24, and projections 2025. These are the categories that were there in 2023. And you'll note that as we look through these dollars, that all of the allocated dollars have been expended. And the last column notes the number of projects. In some cases, it might seem like a small number of projects. When we look at things like roofs, roofs are really expensive. ADA projects are really expensive. So we don't get that far in some of these projects. And in fact, some of these projects actually carry over for more than one year. This is 2024, and you can see that similarly, we are moving through pretty rapidly with all of them. You'll note on the bottom, last year, you created a new rehabilitation category. Those funds are currently being expended as we improve some of the softball fields in the system. And this is where we are with 2025. And of course, these numbers are all zeros because this report was put together at the end of last year and didn't consider things that we might have already done in the first three and a half months of 2025. Capital investment, you'll recall, is evaluated, the projects for the capital are evaluated using the equity ordinance, and it's included in the budget with every ranking. We do that every year, and we allocate funds to those parks that have the highest rankings on a rolling basis. What's important about the chart on the bottom is that our projects typically take at least three years to implement. Sometimes it takes a little longer if we have to rebid, or if there are other things going on that causes to slow a project down. But we spend a year doing engagement and design. We put final designs together, get projects bid. Sometimes we're fortunate enough to get the bids out and get construction started at the end of a second year, but most likely, the construction is happening in a third year. And that becomes important when we look at some of the things that are going on in this chart. These are all the parks that were identified for capital improvements in 2023. And you know, several of them are complete. Several of them have noted here that we haven't allocated a dollar budget to them. But I'll note that if you look at Audubon, Central Gym Park, Harrison, they're going to bid. Falwell Construction is starting soon. And of these parks, Todd Park and Willard Park are just starting the process. And Willard Park in particular is different because it has some federal funds attached to it that we're trying to align with. 2024, this would be last year when we're actually going through the design process. So you'll see there's even fewer dollars expended towards the goal of these projects. And then when we get to 2025, of course, we wouldn't have expended anything because these dollars were only allocated this year. We have some identification of prior projects and their status. And some of these have just taken us longer. 28th Street Todd Lot, we had to go through a process with mint-out and negotiate an acquisition before we could start improvements. And that instance happened several times through here as we look at how we catch up on those projects that were allocated years before 2023. But we are continuing to work to catch up with those projects. And at the bottom, we have just a summary of the dollars that were expended in the years previous to 2023, both in the rehabilitation and capital sections of this project program. And I think that is it.
Thank you. We do have to, we do have a time certain item at 6:30. I think, I'll just take a chance, maybe we have a couple of minutes. Director Wiseman, there was a slide where you talked about the city discretion is at the top, and then the pie charts. I'm sorry, I'm just jumping into questions. I didn't ask the other commissioners. I apologize if anyone, we can come back too, okay? But it's my time management skills, which are very poor. Okay, so there was the thing about the discretion, the way the city has the discretion to, I think it's-
Oh, it's this one.
This one, yes. So this means that this is a commitment amount by the city, but they, we don't know how they're going to fund this. It may be through general fund, but also bonding. Is that accurate?
President Bennie and Commissioners, yes, it's at the city's discretion. So there are times where they do not use net debt bonding for some of our capital projects. Historically, there was some Hilton money that was available historically that they used. At one time, they've used the city's general fund excess fund balance at times as well as they look at kind of their debt ratio and wanting to pay cash for certain items.
Okay, that's helpful, and I might have more questions when we eventually come back to this topic. So for now, I'll recess the full board and turn it over to Admin and Finance.
Okay, at 6:30 p.m., I will call the Administration and Finance Committee to order. Can you take the role, Secretary Ringgold?
Commissioner Alper.
Present.
Commissioner Forni.
Here.
Commissioner Rucker.
Here.
Vice Chair Shaffer.
Here.
Chair Thompson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Now, we have to get an agenda before we do the public hearing, don't we? Oh, boy. Okay, so, would someone like to move the agenda?
I will move the agenda.
Thank you. Any comments on our agenda? Yes, Commissioner Rucker.
I would like to make an amendment to the agenda by adding a resolution narrated by myself and Commissioner Shaffer.
Feel free to share what you want to add. Commissioner Shaffer, could you read that into the minutes?
Would you like me to read the whole amendment, or just the title?
If we have a title, that'd be amazing.
Sure, yeah. It would be, along with the policy, putting into discussion the establishment of a cannabis-smoking ordinance.
Okay. Any commentary on changing the agenda? No. All of those in favor of amending the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay, understood. That motion carries. I will add that to the last of the agenda. We will get a chance to discuss that, okay? Could someone move our minutes from April 2nd?
I'll move the minutes from April 2nd, 2025.
All those in favor of adding the minutes to our agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, we have minutes.
Point of order, I believe you're taking a vote on adopting the minutes, not adding them to your agenda.
Sorry, adopting the minutes. Thank you for that, my sleight of word hand I was saying. We have minutes, yes. And now we have our public hearing. And I have on the list that there's one person to speak. Is someone here to speak toward this issue? Yes, okay, then I'll do an abbreviated, it's the same rules as open time, but thank you for all you want to hear, who want to share your thoughts for tonight's public hearing. I'm opening the public hearing, by the way. If you want to speak, sign up prior. We will have, in a lot of time, I'll give you three minutes per speaker for the one that's signed up. Public testimony will be given without debate. Public testimony will be given without debate, and only clarifying questions from the board are allowed. We will not tolerate discriminatory and or harassing words directed at anyone. So please ensure that your comments you make tonight comply with this policy. The board operates under Robert's rules, and as chair of this meeting, I will call for additional testifiers at the end of the hearing three times before the public hearing is closed. So I have one person on our list, that's Andy Otto. It's Andy Otto here. Excellent.
Chair Thompson.
Yes, I have to, I didn't officially open it, did I?
No, I think you've amended the agenda, but you didn't approve the amended agenda.
Oh, snap. Okay, thank you. All of those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? We have an agenda. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Chair Thompson, one more question. Do you want to save the presentation until we, until after?
Yes, I would love to do that. Thank you for, yes. So, Andy Otto, please come, we're waiting for your amazing testimony. I appreciate your patience. Thank you.
You are totally fine. So I'm Andy Otto, Executive Director of Twin Cities Pride. I promise this is probably the last time you'll see me in front of you, and I totally understand as an executive director of a nonprofit, board rules sometimes get challenging. All I really have to say is my kind reminder, obviously, the passing of THC in the parks and rec situation impacts me, but I think there's something greater that needs to be said, and I want to remind you all of this before you vote on this. And that is, approving this policy ensures that the park system remains competitive and attractive to venues for major events. As a festival, trends are shifting, more attendees are choosing THC products over alcohol. By allowing THC sales, we support the evolving preference of festival goers and help retain high-profile events like my own. It helps keeps our parks vibrant by the money that it comes in and economically strong. And while I understand that THC sometimes can be a contentious topic, I remind everyone that economically and to keep up with the trends, last year, I literally did it within five feet of the park, successfully, mind you. And so, again, I think it's a missed opportunity that if we don't remind ourselves in the park board that it is economically impactful to the park board's bottom line, along with keeping up with trends. That way, the parks don't deter events like mine from being in the park. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this topic, which is our cannabis, I don't have cannabis and tobacco policy update? Would anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak? Hearing no answers, I will close our public hearing for cannabis and tobacco. And, what's the right word I'm looking for? Recession, Administration and Finance Committee. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So I think we're coming back to the full board, which is great. Let me back to where we were. So we were on the 20-year Neighborhood Park Plan. And I was actually commenting, I'll just finish my thoughts, but the, there's the discretionary, the city is, it's the city's discretion how they want to fund that. Would also just point out that if we do, if the city does need to do bonding for this, that would be a way to address property tax or, you know, general fund, you know, issues and squeezes in the city. And I believe the city is, I've seen it at the BET presentations, it's got a very high bonding rating and a very low bonding ratio. I don't know if I'm saying that correctly. So they've been very responsible there. But I would also just want to point out that, you know, this is the money that we're getting on an annual basis, about $13 million, and massive kudos to planning and the organization for the way that the money is pushed out into the system and pushed out really, you know, through the equity metrics and so on, but around a whole bunch of different things and a whole bunch of different improvements. And it shows in the parks. So, I mean, this is a really successful program and, you know, I just, I didn't, I wasn't here at the inception of it, but I'm sure glad to keep it going. So. Are there other, I see Commissioner Forni, yes.
Thank you, President Abani. Yes, it's an awesome program. And I just want to remind people that the Board of Estimate and Taxation had a full-time staff person, his name was Jack, still is, I guess, Jack Wally. And I'll put it bluntly, Jack knew where all the skeletons were. And so, he knew where various things were going to be paid off and therefore, funding would be available, et cetera. And therefore, was able to project out that the funding would be there for MPP 20. We don't have anybody, or do we, at the BET staffing it?
I'll answer that. There's a staff person that will be coming on board. I have not met that person, but that's imminent in a full-time position.
And it is so essential, and I appreciate hearing that because really, it made all the difference in the world to have Jack's knowledge. And I just hope that there is somebody there at the city who is able to find where the couch coins are, what do I say, change? Anyway, because that's really what has funded this very, very well. So I appreciate it.
Yep, that's great. Other comments? Okay, I see no other, no interest in speaking, so we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is our one resolution for the evening on the main agenda. So would somebody please move the resolution for discussion?
I'll move Resolution 2025-79. Resolution directing the superintendent to restore park roads within the mall park that are disturbed by the work undertaken by Met Council Environmental Services to their extant condition.
Do you have a second? I heard a second. So, is there discussion? Commissioner Olson.
I think Alper was first, but. Yeah, I have a few questions for staff, so Assistant Superintendent Schroeder.
Welcome, Assistant Superintendent Schroeder.
So is it still, do staff still support the mall plan as approved by the CAC? Is that still staff's position at this point?
President Abani, Commissioner Olson. Staff worked to put together a plan that was brought through a community advisory committee with a recommendation to approve all of the 40-some parks in the Southwest Service Area. The Board of Commissioners adopted that plan, the Southwest Service Area Parks Plan. And it's the policy of the board. The staff is obligated to follow the policy of the board.
So it's the staff's assessment that this plan either met or exceeded our equity and community-driven engagement guidelines?
President Abani, Commissioner Olson. When we went through the process of moving through approvals of the plan, I would say, yes, the board, in fact, at that time, decided to approve the plan short of this park and King's Highway, which they came back and discussed at a subsequent meeting to approve them and eventually approve all the parks. And so, yes, I think so.
And so, is it kind of staff's assessment that this plan would allow for our staff to take the necessary steps to ensure resident safety, including around fire safety?
President Abani and Commissioner Olson. The nature of a plan that we approve, like the Southwest Service Area Parks Plan or any of our other parks plan, is conceptual in nature, and all of them require additional investigation and work as we move toward a capital project. So they provide a guide for how we would move forward in terms of the sentiment of the community and the board at the time the project was approved by the board. We go through that process of engaging the community when we implement capital plans because now we're expending real dollars and we may uncover other conditions that weren't recognized when we were doing the broader-scale planning.
So there's nothing inherent within this plan that, to your expertise, your knowledge, creates extra danger or dangerous conditions within the community?
President Abani, Commissioner Olson, I think issues have been raised around fire access, which are certainly issues that would be studied further if the existing master plan were to be implemented.
Okay. And so part of the reason we're doing this is because of the opportunity with the sewer lines and the amount of cost-saving that affords us. In your estimation, do you know how much exactly that would save us in staff time and planning and rebuilding and overall funding?
President Abani and Commissioner Olson, I don't know the exact amount, but it's essentially what we considered to be a betterment when we were discussing this with the Met Council Environmental Services. And I believe the number was somewhere around $330,000 or $350,000 for the actual improvements. One of the benefits of having this done by MCES is that they would also do the design and do the project, the management of it, requiring lesser time of staff to be directed to the project.
So if we were to put it back as it is, we would then have to plan how to then re-destroy the new asphalt, new everything. And so it could cost even more than the $300,000?
President Abani, Commissioner Olson, I haven't done a study of what it would cost to remove and replace the pavement, but I would assume it would be similar to that amount and escalated to whatever the year of implementation is, plus the cost of consultants and staff time, which typically is like 15% to 20%, depending on the complexity of a project.
Michael, this is kind of more personal, but so how long have you been planning public spaces for? How long has your career been in this?
President Abani, Commissioner Olson, I'm just trying to do some, in three years, it'll be 50 years.
And how many projects do you think you have personally planned or you have overseen? Give or take.
Assistant Superintendent Schroeder, are you comfortable answering these questions?
President Abani, Commissioner Olson, well, I was trying to reach back to a quote from a movie that Bud Court said at one time, like a number that's unimaginable. I can't even, I can't think of what the quote is, and I couldn't even put a number on the number of projects I've been involved with during my career.
And so the point I'm trying to make here is that we have experts here. Not just bureaucrats, not just folks following policies, not just folks following things we set up before them. We have folks who look really intently at this. And they are bound by our missions, our values, our goals, also obviously by us. And what we're doing with this resolution is we're completely ignoring it, completely throwing it out the window. We are implementing bad governance and just its purest form. We're ignoring climate issues, we're ignoring our equity-driven matrix. We're ignoring our overall goals. And I think probably an argument we're going to hear is that it's not, you know, ending the plan, we're going to come back and we're going to revisit this. As you heard, that's going to cost a lot of money, that's going to cost a lot of resources, that's going to waste a lot of time. And it's not something that I think that our park board should value and be a part of. I think we have a good plan here. Let's move forward with it. And everyone, please vote against this resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Alper.
Yeah, thanks. A few questions. Okay, so in the resolution, it says, removing the road was not supported by the US Fire Marshal staff. Is that a true statement?
President Abani and Commissioner Alper, I don't have the report in front of me, but essentially, the Fire Marshal from Minneapolis directed us to the standards for fire lanes at 20 feet wide and also noted that he would be reserving judgment until final plans were in front of him.
Okay, so let's consider then that he says it doesn't meet that roadway width. Is that what you're saying? So then that would be a true statement?
President Abani, Commissioner Alper, at current, I believe the travel lanes are 12 feet wide, plus there's a parking bay across most of the lengths that are, would be an additional eight feet wide.
Okay, so that makes 20. 12 plus 8 is 20. And what is our current width?
President Abani, Commissioner Alper, I believe it's 12 feet, or generally 12 feet, in the travel lanes.
So we have 12 feet in the travel lanes, but they want 20 feet?
President Abani, Commissioner Alper, the Fire Marshal suggested lanes of 20 feet wide. When you look at implementing roadways to meet those requirements, there are, at times, ways to use other means of implementing the clear zone and pad requirements for support of the equipment that's brought to a site. It doesn't always have to be 20 feet continuous pavement. In fact, I was talking with Directors Iverson this afternoon about some of the unique ways that they're dealing with this on the extension of the Blue Line. I know that at OO and their project on the falls, they're trying to use stabilized turf shoulders as a means of supporting a fire apparatus.
Okay, so it sounds like it's kind of wishy-washy whether our current roadway, you know, like curb-to-curb width, so the 12-foot travel lane, 8-foot wide parking is in compliance with the Fire Marshal.
President Abani and Commissioner Alper, my experience would tell me that we would not get an absolute determination until, as the Fire Marshal indicated, we have final plans brought before.
Okay. So it sounds to me, though, if 20, I mean, 20 feet is the fire lane width, and so if we have parked cars there, we're not meeting, we're not meeting the letter of the law. We're not, we're not in compliance. So I want to check and make sure that when, if we approve this resolution tonight, which I anticipate there, it'll be a 5-4 vote, that we are going to put the road back and make sure that there is a 20-foot road lane with zero parking to meet the intent of the Fire Marshal. That is what I am reading by this resolution. Is that correct? May I ask the resolution maker that we will keep?
We're not going to have a conversation, it'll come through me, so.
Oh, great.
Your questions are noted, and we'll keep moving through.
Okay, great, great. So when we put, okay, so with this resolution, when we put the, when it's rebuilt to the extant conditions, I mean, I guess I'm reading that we're in violation here. And that's, if we're going to bring up the US Fire Marshal, then let's make sure we have that 20-foot 20-foot lane available. So, I mean, we have a case here. Thank you very much, Michael. I don't have any further questions. But when we put this road back, I think then we should make sure that we're meeting the 20-foot lane requirements of the US Fire Marshal, which is what this resolution says. And first of all, we do have people currently breaking our parking ordinance. So either we believe in our ordinances and we follow them, or we change the ordinance. So I'm concerned with just bringing this back as is. So I guess I'm interpreting this to mean that we would put the road back, we'd get rid of the parking. So I look forward to hearing if that's the case.
Thank you. I'll just take a little turn here for myself, and I will comment that taking out the road brings the roadway width down to zero, and that's the problem. And restoring it as green space, that is taking away the roadway. That's the master plan, and that is the piece that's infeasible adjacent to the buildings. There's many examples of roadways that don't conform to the fire code now, because our city definitely predates the fire code, which is from the 70s, I believe. So there's no expectation that the city runs around and rebuilds all the roadways to conform to the fire code, but we certainly shouldn't be making things worse if we don't have to. Until such time, a road is rebuilt and reconstructed, curb-to-curb reconstruction, then at that time, I think that the city does need to look at making sure that the fire apparatus access is adequate per the fire code. So from here, I'm going to jump to Commissioner Rucker.
Thank you, President Abani. Well, I'm going to come with my other hat on, 25-year vet of Minneapolis Fire Department, 21-year as a driver. So I'm driving the apparatus throughout the city. So I can consider myself an expert on this conversation. So with that being said, with the streets that are being narrow, you know, like putting in bike lanes and things like that, there's a lot of streets out here that's not in compliance with 20 feet. With the mall area, it's just very tight already for our rigs to get through there, so it would be detrimental for us to go down in one lane. So we have many fires that has been in that area, Lake of Isles, Beday Makaska. A lot of the homes in that area are balloon construction. Balloon construction is, there's no fire stops from the basement to the attic, so the fire spreads quickly. So our, our response times are critical to get to fires or maybe CPR or whatever else is going on, you know, in that neighborhood. You know, we can't take time to zigzag through the, the neighborhood just to get to a fire. You know, that's our bread and butter, that's what we call it, you know, at the Fire Department. That's why the, the closest rigs are dispatched to whatever incident we have to go to so we can get there in a timely fashion. So I'm a, I'm a vote yes for this because, for this resolution because we, we just need that access. We don't, we don't need a street to be blocked off where we can't get to certain areas. Even in during COVID when, you know, some of the parkways were closed off. It took, you know, several minutes to get to somewhere that it took a second. So for me, it's a safety issue. The residents in that area deserve, you know, better because that's what you're paying your taxes for, is for quality service from the Minneapolis Fire Department. And it's going to go down if we have to zigzag through that area to get to one of those homes. Like I said, they're, they're huge homes over there and I have been in fires where one was on fire and got out of control and then the next one caught on fire. So with that being said, I'm, I'm voting in favor of this resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Menz.
Thank you, President Abani. I'd like to first apologize to my colleagues. The vote that I took on March 5th was not the vote that I intended on March 4th. I was definitely swayed by a fellow respected colleague, former Commissioner Meyer, and others in the community around this issue. And I was not certain about the complexities that are involved in this issue because, as you know, we have limited capacity. I was working a lot with centralized registration at that time and my knowledge was not where it needed to be. Immediately after that vote, I, I did not, it did not feel right in my gut. And that has not happened in this job ever for me. So I wanted to explore more and I wanted to be on site, I needed to see the site, I wanted to hear a little bit more from constituents. Thank you to Commissioner Schaefer for hosting me at the site and letting me discover with my partner my own opinions of this, of this issue. I hear the concerns around government efficiency. I do think that when money comes available, we should definitely utilize it when we can. But I also think that we need to do more, do less, do no harm. And I think that by closing these streets, we could be doing a lot of harm to this neighborhood. We don't know really how the traffic flow is going to change. In my limited experience in this neighborhood, the, the way that you would have to travel using a vehicle would create some undue burden on Lagoon Street and it, it's a complicated space. I also know that this is a compromise plan, that the advocates of this plan would have really liked to take the entire mall space as green space, which in my opinion would be more amenable to me because I think that by taking part of it, we're creating more, more traffic issues in that space. I also think that as many of you know on this board, I, I really want to listen to the constituents who are impacted by changes that happen. I also want to acknowledge Commissioner Schaefer and her professionalism because come that night, I was intending to vote. She thought that I was intending to vote for this and she did not demean or challenge, she just asked questions. And this is, this is on me. And I don't think that this changes the plan. The plan is still in place, the funding will change. This is an opportunity missed for some people in the community and I, and I know that and that is hard to take if I can have a minute or two more.
Sure.
Come back to you, I've got you down, so I'm going to move to Commissioner Thompson.
I don't have to say much, I, I just, I feel a little anecdotal at the moment right now. Does anyone ever remember, it feels like this project is caught in the crosshairs of an ideology that I just want to address. And I was thinking of ants. If you ever were a kid or you play with kids, which obviously I'm a teacher, play with kids, children all the time, you have like an anthill on the sidewalk and kids will rub it out, which isn't the nicest thing to do to ants, right? That you've ruined their sand anthill, but what do the ants do? Do they completely change their behavior since their anthill got destroyed? No, they just build an anthill somewhere else. The reason I'm thinking of this, I promise it tracks in my brain, is that the more we make our city inhospitable for working people, working renters, I mean, as a, as a, as a single mom sometimes whose jobs and employment changed, I needed to rely not on a different bus pattern, but a car to be able to make it that I could still pick up my son at a certain time if my job changed, right? The more we make it inhospitable for people, the more they're just going to leave our city. They're not going to change their behavior, right? They're going to be like the ants, we'll just build an anthill somewhere else. And I just wanted to address that because I really appreciate the people that came to speak that have acknowledged, hey, we love our city, we love this city, we want to be able to stay here, we want to be able to have this thing that we need. And I don't feel like we have to bend over backwards for them to have to explain that. So obviously also there's the Fire Marshal stuff and all these other things, but that was something that just came up in hearing some people talking. So I, I think it's good and I appreciate what you said, Commissioner Menz, and I appreciate Commissioner Schaefer being diligent on this for her community, she has not wavered, thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to turn now to Commissioner Elper again for a second time.
Thank you. Yes, so I think Commissioner, President Abani, you brought up a good point about, you know, typically when reconstruction happens, a renovation happens, that's the time to bring things up to full code compliance. And so with that in mind, I have a clause that I just wrote, be it resolved that NPRB will remove the parking bays to ensure a twenty-foot through lane free of safety impediments that I would like to ask if we could suspend the rules and add as an amendment to this resolution.
So you're making a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, I am making a motion to suspend the rules for that clause that I just read, which I'm happy to read one more time if you, if people aren't listening.
Let's see if we have a motion, an interest in suspending the rules, so there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, so that has been, that motion is before us. All those in favor of, let's do a roll call vote. Secretary, the question is, or the motion is, in favor of suspending the rules?
Commissioner Elper?
Aye.
Commissioner Forni?
Aye.
Commissioner Menz?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Nay.
Commissioner Thompson?
No.
Vice President Musage?
No.
President Abani?
No.
You have five ayes, four nays.
So we are, now, we have now suspended the rules and so now, I'm sorry, we didn't? Oh, we need six?
You need six to suspend the rules.
Is that correct? Okay, so that, that motion, I'm sorry, thank you, that's the first time I've done that as president. That motion does not carry, so we'll go back on with the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. So obviously that, that failed, so I just want to call forward the hypocrisy that's being put forward in this amendment, excuse me, this resolution. If you do not believe, if you believe in fire safety, which I'm hearing from, I'm hearing from the board that that is what you believe, that is the reason for putting this forward, then we should have no safety impediments here. We should have people be allowed, our fire trucks be allowed to pass free and clear. And so a through lane is the travel lane and so I call hypocrisy.
Thank you, Commissioner Menz.
Thank you, Commissioner Elper for submitting that amendment. I do, I do think that there are some things to, to consider here. I, I intended to make a motion to reconsider the previous resolution. I was informed, because I thought that there was a stat, I didn't know that what the statute of limitations was. Apparently, if you all don't know, it's the meeting that we have or the following meeting. That's not the same in the Senate, it's not the same in other governing bodies. But in this body, from what I understand, a motion to reconsider is only the meeting that, that we make the decision or the next meeting. That was my mistake. Regarding Commissioner Elper, I, I am not here to save parking. I think that, that, that parking spaces have been used because we are not enforcing it. If we are not going to, to provide a value for enforcing the ordinance that we have, that is why we are in this situation. That is partially why we're having this conflict, because we haven't maintained the policies that we actually have. So people and citizens are going to utilize those spaces in ways that are going to make sense to them, the working families. So just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues, I apologize to those of you who feel burned, I'm sorry, I'm officially a flip-flopper.
Okay. I think Commissioner Rucker put his light on next.
Yeah, I just want to add to my comments earlier. You know, with the parking issue with the twenty-foot lanes, like I said earlier, there's a lot of streets that are not compliant because there's so much construction going on with widening, I mean narrowing the lanes, you know, on the south side of Minneapolis. We can talk about Bryant as well, you know, that was out of compliance and they had to redo that. So, you know, with that being said, you have, you know, residents that need parking over there as well because there's, there's plenty of parking, there's not enough parking for the apartments that are there. So that needs to stay in place because on, actually on Lagoon and, and Lake Street, those streets have took, they have taken out a lane also for bike lanes. So with that being said, you know, as a Fire Chief said, you know, twenty feet, you know, things like that, but there's a lot of streets out here that are being built now, reconstructed now, that are not twenty feet.
Thank you, and I'm going to call on Commissioner Schaefer.
Yeah, I just want to say briefly a few comments and I know most of you already know my feelings around this, but as District Commissioner for District Four, I really appreciate the sensitivity that my colleagues have had around trying to dive into this issue. And I just want to highlight one thing. You know, we pride ourselves as NPRB leadership around our public engagement and it's stellar. It's stellar compared to many jurisdictions of our comparable status. And so we really try hard when it comes to the point of implementation of our long-range plans to re-engage with the community because we have a whole list. Our plans are usually extensive, full of great ideas, but we never can implement all of them. But we ask the community to prioritize those plans, those amenities that are most important to them. And in this case, if we ignore the community's voice, it's throwing some question on our public engagement in this process because the community within which this park sits does not see this as a priority. And so for us as a park board and set of commissioners and staff to go against the wishes of the community within which this park sits is very different and abnormal from our typical process of implementation. So I just want to make that point and thank you for everyone who is here contributing to this conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner Forni.
Thank you. I guess I have to be very frank, I'm, I'm very confused by all of this. We got a email from the Fire Chief who basically said, well, maybe. I mean, it's not a definite, you guys need to have, you know, this, it was not that at all. And so that's what's really, you know, this whole resolution is based on that concept. And yet we have a true professional report that came back and says, enforce park board ordinance that prohibits parking between the hours of, goes on to say, implement parking meters to encourage. And that's not a part of any of this conversation, in fact, I feel as if we're just negating all of that. And, and so that's why I'm really, really confused by this. I think, you know, what's being raised is a question of, yes, we've got an awful lot of illegal streets. Do we need to be addressing those? And that's what really is concerning to me, it really is, people. And, and I, I understand, you know, that we've heard from the community a petition. I just need to say, I also hear people who are saying, thank you, thank you for doing it, and people who live immediate to the area. So I, I just feel like we're going the wrong route and, I'm sorry, I, I can't support this because there's so many mixed messages that are going on here and, and I thought we had a clear path going forward. I appreciate, you know, Commissioner Menz, your, your candor in it, but for years I voted for this plan and we took away what the community had suggested for King's Highway and went forward with what the mall has said. So. I'm sorry, I, I need to stay with my first decision, thank.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson, for a second time.
Yeah, a couple of things, so this is a new resolution, different resolution. Typically resolutions go through committee first, we should be following that process. And it really seems like we're trying to, each time this comes up, we're just trying to get it through as quickly as possible so that we can put an end to this plan. Parking, 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 parking. We did a whole study on this, it showed that there was ample parking, especially north of the area. And I walk around the area all the time, I know it very well. It's, there would be plenty of neighborhood parking for folks, that is very much overblown. And we've been talking a lot about fire stuff, so I will be moving my amendment. So my amendment is, should I read it now then or?
You're, you're saying you want to move an amendment?
Yeah.
Yes, go for it.
Okay. Whereas the specifications of the mall park roads are the same or larger than many other park roads within the Minneapolis Park and Recreation System. Whereas this would mean that Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board is grossly out of compliance with the Minneapolis Fire Marshal's dictate and has been for decades, putting Minneapolis residents in incredible danger. Resolved that the Board of Commissioners directs the superintendent to perform a complete analysis of park roads to determine which roads are not in compliance with the Minneapolis Fire Marshal's dictate. Resolved that the Board of Commissioners directs the superintendent to widen every road found not to be in compliance so that they are in full compliance with the Minneapolis Fire Marshal, either by removing parking spaces or by widening roads, even if widening the roads would result in the loss of trees or green space.
Second.
Okay, that we have a motion to amend this resolution and that it's been seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, speaking to this new motion is Olson, Commissioner Olson.
So you've probably heard me reading this and you may have read it earlier and thought it was a preposterous amendment. And that's because it is. If we were to pass this amendment, significant portions of our parkways around our park system would be completely destroyed in the fabric that we understand them. I'm thinking Minnehaha Parkway in particular, along that whole route. And I point in and I use some kind of hyperbolic language in there because we're pointing out all this danger, all this danger, why hasn't it come up before? Why didn't it come up until after this started to get more momentum? And folks, initially, if you remember the original testimony here, it was solely around parking. That didn't stick. You know what stuck? Fire stuff, and that's why we're here. And I will say on this, and I appreciate everything that our, our first responders do, but for our Fire Department, actual responding to fires is four percent. Four percent of our fires, four percent of emergency calls. And there are nations, cities around the world that have much smaller rates, much smaller things. And, and I know we've been working on that, we've been getting there. But the question shouldn't be, let's widen all these roads, let's destroy all this green space, let's destroy kind of the charm that our parkways with their current width has allowed. The question should be, how do we transform our city in other ways so that we can have more green space? So that we can have better ways to move around? I'm going to be voting against my own amendment because this would be incredibly destructive and incredibly expensive for us. Now, while it is not, you may think that they're different situations, but they're both sides of the same. of the same coin. So why would you cause harm in a situation? Why would you destroy more green space on one hand? And then, or why would you not do that on one hand? And then why would you, when you have the opportunity to repair past harm, to create more green space? To create something that's more in line with our modern vision of what we need around our climate and around our communities? Why would you not take that opportunity? It's the same logical equivalent of what this would do. Vote against this amendment, vote against the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, so we still have this amendment before us, although it sounds like even the proposer is not going to. Do we want to speak to this amendment, or do we want to just vote on this amendment and go back to the main motion? Although many of us of you would like to speak to it. Okay, Commissioner Thompson, and then I'll call on Commissioner Rucker.
I would just like to say for the record that I don't think it was a preposterous amendment. I think it was a well orchestrated temper tantrum with which to get three extra minutes to lecture us. And I would like the record to state that Commissioner Tom Olson is totally fine destroying trees.
Commissioner Rucker.
I just wanted to add to Commissioner Olson about the 4% that fires we go to. Well, first, we're EMTs as well. A lot of medical runs we go to, that's the majority of where we go to. Ice rescue, well, since we're going to talk about that area, ice rescue, water rescue, trench rescue, we have the full gamut. So it's just not fires. But if you do have a fire there, it's going to be bad if we don't get there in time because of the balloon construction.
Thank you for that. And especially when we're talking about pre-war buildings without sprinklers that are multi-story. Commissioner Menz.
Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Alper, I definitely hear you. I think that there is some hypocrisy in here. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and know that there is always hypocrisy in politics. I don't take any offense to the amendment. I don't think, I think it's a good way to present some of this ridiculousness that happens with what we have in front of us and what we have in our policies that are based on previous designs. So just wanted to, I don't think you had a tantrum.
I want to also make a comment before I call on Commissioner Olson again in case he's retracting this or something, but could somebody on the staff speak to this? And maybe it's the Secretary, because I think we've talked about it before, just with regard to parkways. But the parkway redesign was the Ekbo design in the 70s or something like that, and the parkways were made one-way at that time. And I believe that one of the most, one of the most difficult aspects of that, I've been told by staff, was addressing the Fire Marshal's concerns at the time and working to ensure that there were fire widths where there are structures and dwellings. Does anybody have some background on that for us? No? I'm just putting you on the spot, I apologize.
President Abeni, I don't know anything about how the Fire Marshal responded. I know a lot about how the bikers responded, but not a lot about how the Fire Marshal responded.
Okay, thank you. We'll scratch that. Commissioner Olson.
I would just like to request a roll call.
What?
He wants a roll call vote.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So we're going to now, I think we see no more lights on this particular topic, so we have an amendment before us. And someone has requested a roll call, so Secretary, please take the roll on this amendment. Commissioner Alper.
Nay.
Commissioner Forni.
No.
Commissioner Menz.
Nay.
Commissioner Olson.
No.
Commissioner Rucker.
No.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Nay.
Commissioner Thompson.
No.
Vice President Musich.
No.
President Abeni.
No.
You have nine nays.
Okay, so that fails. So we're back to the original resolution. A number of people have spoken already, and I don't see lights. I want to maybe say a couple of comments, if that's okay. So I have maybe said a little bit, but I haven't spoken twice. One at halftime. But anyway, I'll make it quick. I think my main issue here is, and what you're seeing, there's a lot of little issues. So for some people, it's parking, it's the renters, it's the fire code. For me, and I could go on, but for me, it's the infeasibility of the master plan. And this is a problem. So what we have is a concept plan, and what you're seeing now with this, what I'll call a little bit of chaos, and it's created chaos in the community, is because there's been no due diligence. And due diligence would have identified this problem, closing the south, the south road legs, the eastbound legs is a non-starter against those buildings, period, end of story. And so there was no due diligence. And there are other issues with street vacations, which has also come to light in this process that would take a long time, and that's a statutory issue. So it's put us all in an awkward position. And meanwhile, we certainly can commend the organization for having plans so that when there's an opportunity to invest public dollars, it's done right and per plan. But this, these items in this plan should have had multiple asterisks with them that indicated timelines, statutory requirements, and proper sign-offs. Remember, the city's only commented on the mall, other than a typo. There were two comments. The other one was, "Closing roads will need further review and discussion." And so this is, this is what it looks like when it doesn't, isn't staff-led. So that's why, for me, so everybody has their reason, but for me, I cannot support moving forward with components of an infeasible, non-due diligence-driven, error-ridden plan. And so at least what this does is it asks for the pause, let the Met Council do their important work, we need to support our partners, especially with utilities, and then at such time when this project receives funding in the future, this park, I should say, this issue can be re-engaged. In the meantime, some of these missing elements of the due diligence related to street vacation and perhaps a sign-off. I want to say one more thing. I work in public projects, like this is what I do for a living. And so there's also, the Fire Chief said, "I'll look at the final plans when they come through." That's because he doesn't review, he doesn't get involved in every single design idea that's out there. There's a process. And he, and he would expect that the due diligence happens early in project development, and so only fully baked ideas are coming to him. And if it is coming to him and he, they want an exception, "Hey, we're 18 feet here, but we've got a pad," or, "We know you need outriggers next to these multi-story buildings, so we're going to give you 26 feet, but they're going to be on pads in the grass or something," you're asking him a very specific question. What we asked him is, "Can we close these roads?" And he basically said, "No." So that's where I'm coming from. So anyway, I'm done. Okay. Okay, so with that, we have a resolution in front of us, and I'm going to read the number again and ask for a roll call vote for Resolution 2025-79. Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Alper.
Nay.
Commissioner Forni.
Nay.
Commissioner Menz.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Nope.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Musich.
Aye.
President Abeni.
Aye.
You have six ayes, three nays.
That passes. Thank you. Now, we were on petitions and communications, and I need to start with Commissioner Menz.
Well, it's been a busy, it's been a busy week. I just wanted to really express gratitude to the folks who did call me and the folks that I got to talk to, Peter Schmidt, who I talked to today. And also express some concerns from my community directly from some of the parks. In the spirit of what Commissioner Alper was saying about the ice rinks, I think that we really do need to explore our BIF and our public bathroom plan. I have been in contact with staff and I have been trying to get some bathrooms open in different spaces because there are hundreds of people in those parks. But from what I've learned, we don't open public bathrooms in community parks until Memorial Day. That seems insanely late for me. And it also seems like we are not serving the community with these public dollars in a way that's effective. So I don't know how we change the workflow, but it is a very big concern, at least in my community. And when I go to Boom Island or when I'm at Northeast Park and there's hundreds of people there, and we have a bathroom structure that is remotely locked and we can't open it, and it doesn't seem to be able to be opened. It just doesn't make any sense to me or the community. So, and then we put BIFs out there that are not maintained and there's no toilet paper. So that shows complete negligence on our part. And I don't want that to happen. Like, so how do we reexamine that plan? I think that as we look at our budgets, I think that public restrooms are a huge piece of what the community expects from us. And I think that we really need to examine how we're servicing the community in that respect and how we're holding BIF accountable if we're going to have BIFs in there in these spaces.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Abeni. Yeah, I would agree with that, Commissioner Menz. I think about how many people, I mean, I had a whole BIF escapade up in District Two early on in our tenure that was, yeah, like people, I think drinking fountains, BIFs, and paths. We had the Rick Record Trail people out, right? Like, these are the things that are used the most, it seems like, in our, in our system. I just wanted to address what Commissioner Alper announced to us and say thank you for sharing that. Thank you. I know we'll have other opportunities, but it feels a little weird to know that, like, we won't be the same group, even as we're a ramshackle bunch of misfits as it is. So thank you for that. And I, I agree also with the parks, the ice rinks, excuse me. And I would love to find a way for us to figure that out in a more strategic manner before we're all done together. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Forni.
Thank you. Today was the opening of Graco. I'm really, 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 really so proud of that building. It is absolutely gorgeous. So I encourage all of you to go over it. It's been outfitted with actual chairs and things like that. It is just so gorgeous. Because of budget constraints and everything, the hope is actually that it will be used more initially for events. And so please, I encourage everybody to spread the word. It would be a gorgeous location for a wedding, for a reception, things like that. Please, 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 pass the word. It's just such a beautiful setting. And I'm sorry if I get a little emotional, but what's happening on the river is so powerful to me. It's something that I've been engaged for decades. And it was very exciting that on Monday, the mayor announced the passing of the stewardship to Owamni Yomni, Okoroapi, OO. And to me, that's just an amazing thing. For us to recognize the cultural ties. Oh, I'm really sorry. Anyway, but I'm going to give credit to a man that I really miss very dearly, and that's Paul Riles. He was the one who really understood it. And of course, another person who understood it is our dear Assistant Superintendent Michael Schroeder. They saw that this is so important for us to make those ties permanent again. And so, anyway, sorry about that. I also want to say, as my usual and everything, happy birthday yesterday to our Commissioner Schaefer. But you know me, I also have quite a few cards, and so I also want to share. For Becky's daughter. I thought she would appreciate that. Happy birthday.
Okay. I think you're finished? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Olson.
Just a little thing, a little spring phenomena. I noticed while I was playing pickup basketball at Lynnhurst Park, for the first time, I saw a group of kids, I don't know, maybe 10, 9, 11, independent of any adult, playing a game of kickball next to it. And I don't know, it just felt like city was healing, nature was healing, you know, like, you know, typically you see, you know, there's some like super good, there's something going on. But it just was completely spontaneous, and I think that's what it's all about. And so that gave me some inspiration and some hope.
Commissioner Rucker.
Yeah, I've been getting around the city, checking out different parks. But if we can get staff or directors to change the information boards, because some of them, a lot of them say hockey. So if we can get the updated information on there at all the parks, that would be great. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice President Musich.
Thank you, President Abeni. I'm excited to hear that so many of my colleagues are also excited about restrooms and plumbing. We have thousands of plumbing fixtures that need to be turned on every spring, and I think we have three plumbers. So that's why our goal is Memorial Day. In order to change that, we would need to find ways to hire more people or engage contractual services that would be in compliant with our labor contracts. And it is obviously going to be a big budget conversation for us because that's incredibly expensive, as are BIFs. We had to cut way back when we did not have enough money to pay for all of them that we put out during COVID. So, you know, I'm hopeful that staff will come to us with some out-of-the-box thinking around ways that we might be able to fund additional BIFs throughout the system and have them serviced more. Servicing them more does increase the cost exponentially, and again, eats into our budget. So I'm looking forward to having those conversations with all of you during our budget retreat. I too am very passionate about people having places to pee that are not our lakes and common spaces. So yeah, thank you all for sharing your interest in that topic. I also did want to remind everyone, everyone who's here in the room already saw that Earth Day is coming up this weekend, our celebration here in the, in the city of Minneapolis. We have the largest service project for the city in our parks, and that's picking up litter and making sure that it doesn't make its way into our water bodies, or our dogs' bellies, or our wildlife's bellies as well. So I'm very excited to be hosting one of those sites, and I look forward to seeing everyone out in the audience out picking up trash this coming weekend so that we can get spring off to a clean start in the parks.
Thank you. And I would also, I was with Commissioner Forni and also Superintendent Bangora also at the event on Monday for Owamni Yomi Okodiapi. And I wish it would have gotten more press that day because it, it shows that the city of Minneapolis and the parks are right there involved. So the city is kind of, I think, the intermediary, but this is the, a smart and right thing to do. If the federal government is relinquishing those lands, it absolutely makes sense that they go to OO. And so what the, so all of the commissioners really understand what, what our role is as a park board is the park, the adjacent park system is going to be programmed jointly and seamlessly with, with that neighbor and partner. And so it's a really, it's a really forward and smart idea. And so I was just happy to be part of it. I wish the press would have gotten it, but I think it's a little wonky. But I think they will when it comes, comes to the next steps of that. And I also want to just make a comment, just because we have had some discussions about first responders, particularly firefighters and so on. And I just want to really say my, you know, appreciation for what, what firefighters do, responding in emergencies under all kinds of conditions. And they, they do it. And they do it so well, in fact, that I think many of us just take for granted that service. But I really want to just acknowledge and appreciate the ways in which they risk, take risks in order for the rest of the community to be safe. And so with that, I would like to go ahead and adjourn the full board. Thank you.
And with that, I will, why don't, remember, why do I not get the right words? Reconvene the Administration and Finance Committee. There it is, reconvene. And we are probably very close to being ready for a presentation. I actually would prefer if maybe we got a presentation before moving any of these different resolutions. How about that? Since they're all, oh, no, they're all linked except for one. Well, so we'll, we'll get through this lovely thing. Thank you for changing the order for me also, Secretary Ringgold, because I know this was supposed to go one thing at a time.
Chair Thompson, that's, that's just fine. We've had our own set of complications with the technology tonight, so I apologize for that as well. We did combine the cannabis, tobacco policy, as well as the THC policy into one presentation, so that's already done. done. So, with that, I will just work my way through it. Just a reminder, this conversation with us around cannabis really started when the state law changed. And we were the, Minnesota was the 23rd state to legalize cannabis for individuals 21 and older. And that legalization went into effect on August 1st of 2023. The state law did not provide any prohibited uses for public spaces. So, in that sense, kind of let it, put it level across all public spaces. And now, different jurisdictions are working to establish their approach to it. The state law allows an ordinance with up to a petty misdemeanor to be able to ban or prohibit use of cannabis within public spaces, but it doesn't require it. When we presented this last, we thought sale might start in first quarter. I looked today, sale has not started. We're at the point where I think all of the applications are in, and they're going to be going through lottery. So, that's yet to come. There's been several times where we've talked about this topic with the board, starting in September of 2023. We provided an initial conversation about it. We started to talk more detail in it the year after that, August 7th, 2024. And then, by November 6th of 2024, we brought forward a resolution to put out for public comment two policies, one that would focus on adding cannabis to the existing tobacco policy, and one that would address THC sale at concessions and, and permanent events. On January 7th, as we do when we put policies out for public comment, we provided an overview of those policies to the board. And tonight, we will be presenting some revised policies, as well as the input we got during that public comment period. Just to recap, when we put those items out for public comment, we put them out in English, Spanish, Somali, and Mung. They were online. You could also call the park board customer service desk to get printed copies of that. And it closed, we did a 60-day comment period, and it closed January 21st, 2025. The cannabis and tobacco policy, the intent is, again, to prohibit smoking and vaping by policy, not by ordinance. This puts it into a, a situation where the community, where staff are in a, in a place where they are providing the enforcement around this. There's no penalty in terms of jail time. The, one thing that can result out of this is if there's a lack of compliance, if we end up with disorderly conduct or other types of situations, an individual could be ejected from a park. There could also be some type of citation provided to them for that type of, of situation. Getting to some of the survey results, so we had 2,000, just over 2,000 people start this survey. 1,300 folks, roughly, that's a little bit different by question, but 1,300 folks participated in the actual questions regarding the cannabis and tobacco policy. There's been several questions among this board, is can we figure out where these people are from? Can we determine if we're working with Minneapolis residents or not? So, we did a review of the IP addresses. And now, this isn't a perfect science, so I want to be really clear, that this is not a perfect science. This kind of narrows in your focus on this a little bit. Looking at those IP addresses, 85% of the folks who responded to this portion of this, to the survey in general, were in Minnesota. And 67% were specifically Minneapolis. Now, big caveats, take your laptop, you go somewhere else on vacation, you fill out the survey there. You might be a Minneapolis resident, but it's not going to show up that you're actually in Minneapolis when you take the survey. The other fun thing, and some of you might experience this, if your phone, for example, defaults to Chicago all of the time, your phone, your device actually might have an IP address specifically designated to another part of the country. So, if we get Chicago responses on this particular survey, those might be Minneapolis residents. I would probably show up as a Chicago resident versus a Minneapolis resident taking this survey. So, I want, I want to provide some caution in terms of how these numbers look. But we do show, actually, just looking at that Minneapolis IP in comparison to the rest of the survey respondents as we go through this. We did put this out on Facebook and Instagram. While that tried to direct people to the survey, there were folks who commented there. So, we had 26 unique commenters there. And on this particular policy, we spent some time both with our park, our, our NPRB Indigenous Park Council, as well as the Urban Indian Advisory Board, talking about the ceremonial use of tobacco. So, here are some numbers. The orange is the full number of respondents. The blue is the individuals who have a Minneapolis IP address. This first question was whether or not, as folks read the policy, if they felt it met our intent, right? So, we gave them what the intent was. We showed them the policy. They were able to articulate to us whether or not they felt the policy met, met our intent. So, in this case, 66% of Minneapolis IP addresses, and then 64% of the full survey said yes, they felt that it met the intent. Whereas, 25% of Minneapolis said no, 27 said no, and then there's another category of about 9% in each case. The next question we asked was really trying to get to the sense of, were we meeting expectations of the survey respondents? So, we gave the opportunity to say, did we go too far? Did we meet expectations? Did we not go far enough? Again, orange is the full survey responses, blue is Minneapolis-specific. And you can see that the meets expectations score is 44% for the Minneapolis IP and 22% for the full, or sorry, 42% for the full. For Minneapolis, it's interesting, 28% each direction, too far, not far enough. Breaks out a little bit on the full survey, 27, too far, 31%, not far enough. We used a very similar process to this that you've seen planning explain, where they take a comment, they break it up into all the individual comments, they bring it down, and they get it down to the themes. So, for this particular policy and the data we had, which was many questions, there were many questions, some of them kind of asking the same thing, but giving folks ample opportunity to, to weigh in on it. We ended up with about 85 themes, and there should be a copy of those themes at your desk. It's also up online. It was Attachment B. The, I think we hit almost every possible theme that we could have hit, so it's pretty wide-ranging. The intent here isn't to make this a tally. The intent is to get a clear record of all of what the themes are. Everything from requesting a change in enforcement, requesting an ordinance, requesting no policy, allowing some areas for smoking and vaping, and concerns around ceremonial use. You will also note on Attachment A, we articulated on here whether or not the change could be made with or without redirection from the board, and did our best to provide some indication in terms of what, what that might look like. We did make a few edits to the policy, so the one that's posted online right now has a few redlined items in it, some of the pieces that came through in kind of non-intent-changing edits. As folks wanted us to have a few more parts of the policy that just got to the point. So, you'll see that we added some headings into places so that we still kept the background information, but articulated the no smoking or vaping of cannabis or THC within Minneapolis parks, no smoking, vaping, or use of any form of tobacco products within Minneapolis parks. Just put that up straight. The rest of the text is below it. No change in intent. Similar, folks were struggling to find the part of the policy that actually was talking about enforcement penalties and awareness, so we drew that out with a header. Then, something interesting kind of happened in two spaces around the ceremonial use. In talking with our Indigenous Park Council, their comments were, look, ceremonial tobacco is actually different, different than typical tobacco. It's not typical commercial tobacco that you use for ceremonial use. So, it's holding that con, con, a set of comments coming up from that group of individuals, as well as some of the concerns that came up in the actual survey responses of, you know, maybe the, maybe we should still have an approval process for ceremonial use. And I've combined those two pieces here, still not adding any approval process, but defining the tobacco as traditional tobacco, and articulating that that's kind of a different product from commercial. Actually brought this, this definition to their Urban Indian Advisory Board in Duluth a couple weeks ago, and they thought this was a great definition for it. So, we've got support on that. The draft THC policy, so this focuses on edibles and beverages. And this is really, while the smoking and vaping kind of patterns after tobacco, the beverages and the edibles kind of patterns more after alcohol. And so, the intent here is to establish the conditions by which we would allow sale of THC edibles and beverages at, at events or concessions. It establishes kind of the, the, how the permit holders would work through that, that they would still need to be licensed, that they would still have to be compliant with actually being able, we won't, we won't manage their license to sale, but we would allow if they were licensed to be selling at events and concessions. By the time people got to this part of the survey, they dropped off a little bit, so we lost about 300 people for the questions in relation to this. Still, we're going to compare the Minneapolis IP addresses to the overall number of respondents. And the Facebook and Instagram comments covered THC edibles as well. Again, orange is the full set of respondents. Blue is the Minneapolis IP. So, in terms of, did we meet our stated intent? We had 75% of Minneapolis respondents or Minneapolis IP addresses saying that we met, and 18% saying we didn't meet that intent, which was a little bit higher on the yes category than the full survey, which the full survey put us at 73 at yes and 20 at the no. When we came to then this question, this meet expectations question, are we too, did we go too far? Do we not go far enough? Do, are we meeting expectations? So, we were at 65% meets with Minneapolis IP addresses and 63% with the full survey. Actually, a similar point spread, interestingly enough, but we had 15 too far and 20% not far enough with the Minneapolis IP and 16 to 21 at the full survey. This one boiled down to 11 themes. Those themes mirrored some of what we saw on the cannabis and tobacco, changes in enforcement, requesting ordinances, requesting no ban, and different than the other one, change in potency allowance. So, 5-milligram was resonating as too low for some of the respondents. We did make a few edits to this one based on clarifying that it's around concessions and events. We removed some duplicative language. We hadn't been very clear on some grab-and-go language, and we were using THC and cannabis inconsistently throughout the policy. So, you can see how this redlines for us in that first policy statement is where we really articulate the cannabis and events, is the specific focus. Some cleaning up in terms of how the words are placed. The, you can see at the lower end on page, Procedure 1E, an example of taking the cannabis and changing that to a THC product. And then, really, on C is where we do quite a bit. We didn't have great language in there on the grab-and-go, so that's, that's clarified. And both on F and on the very final red line before we hit implementation, those were just, they'd been, repeated it too many times within the document. So, it's no change. It's just removing the duplicates. That is the presentation of the policy changes and the key points from the community engagement. I do, Pamela Gokamire is not here tonight. She's been super helpful on this. Jason O'Hado has been part of this work as well. Shane Stensel, Annie Olson, who is here, has worked quite a bit on the THC part of it. And then Frankie has been here the whole way, helping us along and making sure we're aligning with the state. We're here for questions, if you have them.
Thank you for that. Do my colleagues have questions? Yes, Commissioner Olson.
I, well, just, I just want to, one, thank you for, for this, for, you know, great survey, great rollout, getting so many responses. Do you know, like, is this one of the higher responses we've ever had to this sort of thing? Or is, do we?
Well, I can say from my experience, the only time I've hit this level of response was back in about 2005, when I was working on our previous comp plan, where I got about 3,000 responses at that time. That was actually pre-Survey Monkey, so those were mostly paper responses. But, yeah, so that's probably, for me, it feels like there's probably some planning things that have hit this level, but certainly not policy.
Well, great. I mean, I just commend y'all on it to get such kind of a breadth of opinion and like a true sample size of the city here. I'd also note on the, another thing, VPNs could, you know, people could have, a lot of people use VPNs, and so that could really have been skewing the statistics as well, one way or the other, right? But I don't think folks would be in California like, all right, I really want weed policy here. But just want to thank you for it.
So, we haven't actually moved anything yet.
That's a good point.
Thank you for all of that. I know that an immense amount of time and attention to detail across our organization happened for this draft policy that we're talking about now. So, would someone like to move one of our resolutions on this?
Yes. I would like to move Resolution 2025-71, a resolution approving the cannabis and tobacco policy for the Minneapolis Park and Recreation System.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing no lights. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Let's, how about the next one?
I'll move Resolution 2025-72, Resolution Improving a THC Policy for the Minneapolis Park and Recreation System.
Any questions or comments? Seeing no lights. I'll take that to a vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2025-72, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Pretty sure I counted correctly. Okay. So, I had said that the thing we were going to add would go at the end, and I totally forgot that we have our Lowering Park thing. So, I think it might be best to discuss that right now, if the co-authors or author would like to read that in, and we'll find a number for it.
Sure. I, I'll, I'll move this. This is a resolution of establishment of a cannabis smoking ordinance. And this was something that I heard a lot about through this process personally in my district. And from my understanding, it was kind of skipped over in the slide, but, you know, NPRB does have a responsibility under state law to prevent cannabis smoking in the presence of minors. In our park system, you know, we can have minors everywhere, right? Playgrounds, rec centers, et cetera. And so, I'm really happy to see that we, you know, at least in committee, unanimously approved this policy for no smoking in our parks. Because I think if we didn't have that policy, we could technically be, from my understanding, in violation of state law. Because we do need to protect our minors. We do need to have boundaries around protecting our youth. For, to me, I would like our board to also consider an ordinance approach that would give us, together, approach, ordinance approach, that would give us the ability to enforce the responsibility that we have to protect minors and others if so needed. We would not, would we need this all the time? No. But we would have it in place if needed. And it would also be in step with the direction of many of our metro area municipalities, who have ordinance, ordinances, not policies against smoking. So, for me, and reflecting that Minneapolis would be this island of, of approach to smoking of cigarette and cannabis in our system, different from our neighbors like St. Paul, et cetera. et cetera, makes me wonder if it would be beneficial for us as a park system to mirror what our surrounding metro areas and neighboring cities are actually implementing. So that was my spirit in bringing this forward and for consideration.
Thank you. Did we actually read the actual thing?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I did not.
I apologize because I was trying to cut time before, and I don't know that we ever read it into the record, if you'd like to read it.
Yes. Whereas the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, NPRB, is a steward of Minneapolis Parks, whereas NPRB was founded in 1883 by the state, act of the state legislature and has the responsibility to design, improve, and manage parks in Minneapolis. Whereas many area municipalities have enacted cannabis smoking ordinances, including their public parks. Please see the attached screenshots of previous NPRB meetings, and you will see Duluth, Stillwater, St. Paul, various ones mentioned, and I think they're actually in our packet as well. Resolved that the Board of Commissioners, oh, I'm sorry, whereas many municipalities have cannabis ordinances that have violations as petty misdemeanors, which are like a parking ticket, there is no jail time, which was inferred in our slide. Resolved that the Board of Commissioners direct NPRB staff to write a cannabis and cigarette smoking ordinance excluding ceremonial tobacco in Minneapolis parks. Resolved NPRB staff will design and implement appropriate processes and fees for potential violations of this ordinance, taking into consideration other municipal cannabis ordinances and following the common direction of petty misdemeanor in these municipalities. And resolved NPRB staff will perform necessary public engagement of inform and notification of the cannabis and cigarette smoking ordinance in Minneapolis parks and all parkland. And resolved that the President and Board and Secretary of the Board are authorized to take all necessary administrative actions to implement this resolution. And I guess my final point I'll just mention is, I understand the need to be consistent with cigarette and cannabis, and so this would be an escalation of the cigarette, you know, there'd be more enforcement potential for the smoking as well of both cannabis and cigarette. And I think that's it.
Thank you for that. Does anyone have questions, comments? See Commissioner, Vice President Musich.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I'm not on this committee, so I appreciate being given the opportunity to speak. When the state of Minnesota made marijuana legal, they noted that part of the reason they, they were doing so was because the laws on the books were disproportionately impacting people of color and young people in our state. Because those were the people that were getting the police called on them for using this substance. I believe that by recriminalizing this activity, we would be perpetuating what the legalization was attempting to prevent. And so I would hope that this does not make it out of committee, but if it does, I will be voting against it at the full board.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson, would you?
Thank you for letting me speak, even though I am not on this committee. Yeah, I mean, you know, we've been considering this for, for quite a while, right? The, the fees or misdemeanor. You know, I think we really just got conclusive evidence that this is not what the city wants. A super majority, really strong representative, representation of the city said that this would be going too far for them, and that what we have right now is appropriate. You know, I'll just add on, there's a hidden cost to these fees, you know, beyond, you know, just, you know, it means that our officers, you know, we only have, what, you know, 35? Now, are we even there yet? It means that they're spending time tracking around going, trying to write these fees when they could be going after bigger fish, things that are actually really harming public safety, harming our park experience. It means that, you know, under our current administration, if you are an immigrant who was seeking asylum, you know, doesn't have the proper documentation, and you get a petty misdemeanor, this could be contributing to your point system that gets you deported to a prison camp in El Salvador. This is not inconsequential stuff. It should not be taken lightly. And by recriminalizing, we can really hurt a lot of lives. So let's stick with what the super majority of our respondents, of our constituents want, please. If somehow there's, there's a ton of chaos around it, we can come back and we can revisit it. Please don't vote this through.
Thank you. Is that, yes, sorry, Commissioner Alper. I can't, I call the lights over there.
I just want to say, I, I, Commissioner Schaefer and Commissioner Rucker, that appreciate your intent with this. As a, as a complete non-smoker, I really don't enjoy it when others are smoking cannabis near me. However, I, I do want to bring up, just echo a point that Commissioner Olson made. If you go to the Sahan Journal from yesterday, you'll see there's an article that there's a University of Minnesota grad student who had his visa status revoked because of a petty misdemeanor, like, and it was a parking ticket, like you had stated. So, I mean, these have huge consequences now. So it's not just, he's, he's a real person, you know? This is a real person who's being deported. So I, I just want to bring up that it's not just like that it could have a consequence, that it, it is having a consequence as of yesterday. So I, I will not be supporting this, and I, I hope that others on this committee as well will stick with what we've got, which I think is really strong and I think is really good. And again, if, if there's disorderly conduct associated with this, that gives our park police the, the reason to come in and, and get involved. And I, I think that's, I think that's good enough. That meets the, that meets our need. Yeah.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Schaefer.
I just want to make one point that Commissioner, bring up one response to Commissioner Olson's point about the fact that the park police that would take them away from other things. You know, we have traffic speed limits, and, you know, just because our regular police are stretched in dealing with violent crime calls and not able to be as much traffic speed enforcement right now, doesn't mean that we should get rid of the traffic speed limit signs. The idea of, of an ordinance is to have a boundary, is to have a place where people know that there is a consequence if the rule is violated. That's, that's what I'm trying to say. So just because the police are doing other things, doesn't mean we get rid of traffic speed limits, so, because they don't have time to give tickets, right? So that's just my.
Commissioner Rucker.
I just want to add that, the reason why I was part of this, being, you know, co-author is this is because, just like Commissioner Schaefer mentioned, that our surrounding metro area neighbors have an ordinance, we would be the only one without an ordinance. And with me, you know, being on the fire department, I'm going, even though it's legalized, we are going to young children that are getting a hold of the gummies. And we have to go for drug overdoses on kids. This is not making the news. And that was my main reason for, for this. I mean, it could be, you know, for our parks, okay, you want to sell it in our parks, somebody could drop, drop one of them. A kid picks it up. Next thing you know, we're at the park for a drug overdose on a kid. So I'm looking out for, looking out for the vulnerable, the kids, because I'm the one going on these runs and seeing this. And we have lost, you know, one to this. So that's why I was a co-author of this. Thank you.
Commissioner Alper for a second time.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Thompson. Just a point of information, this, this, I don't, this isn't about gummies, is it? I'm not reading anything about gummies.
I don't believe it is.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm confused by your, your comments right now, Commissioner Rucker, that, how that.
Okay, well, what, what, okay. If you want to go, go deeper into that, I have been with young kids that were smoking, that was laced with something, that we had to take to ACMC to, what they use as charcoal to get the, everything out of the system and everything. So what I'm saying is, it's a danger to our kids, period. You know, if it happens, see, this is a thing that I noticed. Until it happens to somebody, then they're cared. But until then, they don't. I, I am right there.
Seeing no other lights, I, I will add, first of all, I don't know that this is actually, I know that, that it was brought up because of the cannabis and THC policy, but I actually think this is a larger discussion in my perspective. I am extremely sensitive to what this does to kids, and I think this might springboard us and do a different direction. I too have seen, I mean, just yesterday, I pulled into the parking lot of my school, and I saw kids in this adjacent car vaping, pretty sure it wasn't tobacco, one last time before they head into the building, right? That's a, that's a, that's a very different conversation. And I don't, I, I know that smoking is a problem for kids, whether it's vaping or tobacco or cannabis, it's really profoundly challenging. And I'm sure that, that Commissioner Rucker and Schaefer, and I'm not trying to discount anybody else's experience, I just know that I echo a lot of things that Commissioner Rucker has said. I have observed, observed challenging, really challenging things as well. That being said, I am, I am not fully confident in my ability to understand what this would do. And I would actually like to make a motion to, to table this, to talk about another time, if it gets re-sussed out a little bit more. I'm not opposed to the conversation, but I don't think that I am prepared to pass it tonight. So I'm making a motion to table. And I'm just going to take the two vote. All those in favor of my motion to table, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. And it's postpone? You prefer postpone?
Chair Thompson, I just, sorry for the side conversation, I was at.
It's okay.
If you wanted to postpone, you would set a date. If you want to table, you don't set a date. And I, I'm not suggesting a preference here.
I would prefer to table it. Because I, I, I think, as a, as just my perspective is, they are different ideas. I think of my friend, former Commissioner Vita, who's now Councilmember Vita, who talked a lot about the tobacco policies in parks. And I just think, like, this is what that echoes to me of protecting kids, and it's not, it's like revisiting that idea, not revisiting the cannabis THC. That's the way I read it. So that's why I would like to table this. But I'm not sure if everybody voted, and I'm not sure if it passed or not, so we'll take another vote after I listen to Commissioner Schaefer.
Could you just reiterate for me what was, I was, I misunderstood, I didn't understand what you said about cigarette smoking being different from cannabis?
I don't, I don't think they're different.
I'm trying to understand the reasons.
To, to, to more further explore what this would look like, and to decouple it from the, the, to me, it's a completely separate policy. The cannabis, what we just moved and passed of Resolution 2025-71 is, is taking cannabis and tobacco and saying they're the same, and then we have a separate THC, basically saying THC and alcohol are the same. And I can get behind both of those ideas. And I feel, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that your resolution speaks toward, and now tobacco and cannabis need to have this other thing around it which hasn't existed before. And I don't disagree necessarily with that, but I'm not prepared to say yes or no tonight because it just feels like it's a bigger conversation that I need to wrap my head around. That's just me. So I said table it so it gets us time, we have a lot of things in the process. That, that's why I just didn't want to time certain.
I'd like to call me a question.
All right. All those in favor of tabling, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
It's not being tabled, okay? So, any seeing no other lights? All those in favor, we don't have a, a number for this, let's call it 2025-7, nope, don't number it. We're calling it Schaefer-Rucker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And I abstain. So a tie is a fail. So that does not carry. Okay, we have one resolution left tonight, and I know it's actually one that the neighborhood has been waiting for, probably for many years, if someone would like to move that for us.
With resolution amending the 2025 capital improvement program to allocate an additional $39,888 from the Loring Park neighborhood portion of the Dibble-Hornstein Parkland Dedication Fund, and accepting $50,000 of donor funds through the Minneapolis Parks Foundation to pay for final construction drawings for the Burger Fountain Rehabilitation Project in Loring Park.
Anybody have a question or comment? Seeing no lights, I'll just say, I know that Commissioner Schaefer worked on this, and I also at one point had a conversation, and I, it was just nice to see it come up. So thank you for the tenacity of people behind this, for moving money around and seeing it happen. All those in favor of 2025-50, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And with that, I will adjourn the Administration and Finance Committee.
The time being 8:10 PM, I would like to call to order the Operations and Environment Committee. Secretary Ringgold, can you please take the role?
Commissioner Forney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Vice Chair Schaefer.
Here.
Chair Musich.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. Could I please get a motion to adopt our agenda this evening?
Don't move.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mens, since your mic wasn't on for the viewing audience, I'm just going to say that I love that you said that. Okay. And can I now get a vote on the agenda as proposed? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, we have an agenda. We have some meeting minutes, would someone like to move those?
I'll move, go ahead. I'll move the meeting minutes from October 1st, 2024.
Thank you, Commissioner Mens. All those in favor of adopting our meeting minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. This evening, we have a study report item on the IPM policy revision and Buckthorn Management Statement. We are joined by Assistant Superintendent Barrick, James Schaefer, our Natural Resources Supervisor, Kate Ryan, our Horticulture Manager. Assistant Superintendent Barrick, you have the floor.
Good evening, Chair Musich, Commissioners. Thank you. Yes, so if you recall, in the spring of 2024, we were asked to update our Integrated Pest Management Policy, which hadn't been updated since, should I have not done that? Nope, it worked. Sorry. So to update our IPM policy, which hadn't been updated since 2008. Through that process, there was an open, public review in which we received comments, and during that process, we received a substantial amount of comments related to the management of Buckthorn. And so I'm joined by Kate Ryan, the Horticulture Manager, and James Schaefer, the Natural Resources Supervisor, as the work kind of spans both work groups, with the IPM policy residing within our horticulture and then the Buckthorn. Really, that spans all the groups, but James's team leads a lot of our restoration efforts, and so they are two foremost experts. So I will turn it over to them without further ado.
Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. I'm Kate Ryan, the Horticulture Manager here at the Park Board. To kind of kick us off, we have kind of three things. Just reintroduce you guys to what the Integrated Pest Management Policy and Operations Manual is. James will provide us a brief overview of Buckthorn, and then we'll talk a little bit about how that policy revision cycle is planned. So as Jeremy mentioned, our So as Jeremy mentioned, our IPM policy or integrated pest management, um, was updated in 2024, which marked the first update it had seen since 2008. Our current policy also includes an operations manual to provide the public additional insight on how the policy is operationalized within our park system. And during the latest policy, uh, update process, public comments were received as part of the community engagement plan. Public comments ranged from support to opposition of the drafted policy, but we also received comments about additional language members of the public would like to see included. One popular request was language around, um, NPRB's stance on how we manage our buckthorn. So I'll hand it off to James to talk a little bit more specifically about buckthorn.
Welcome, James, thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks for having us. Um, you know, I'm sure most of you are fairly familiar with buckthorn, uh, working with your communities as much as you do. Um, but just as a brief overview, it's an invasive shrub, uh, that grows rapidly, forms dense monocultures. Um, these dense monocultures have a tendency to choke out a lot of native regeneration within our woodland areas, and that can be both the regeneration of the canopy, as well as any like grasses, forbs, and other pollinators that might, uh, otherwise grow along Forest 4. Um, it spreads really easily from seed, that's one of its biggest problems, is that whenever you have a seed source, birds, uh, reluctantly will eat it, and it's also a diuretic, so it doesn't last long, and it finds a new place to, uh, to find a home. Um, but also, it's a really aggressively, uh, really aggressive respouter. So if you cut a surface and don't do anything about it, you're actually creating more of a problem, because it creates multiple stems, and then you get a denser stand, so it can be a, a chore to deal with. It is listed by the Minnesota Department of Agriculture as a restricted noxious weed. Uh, the Department of Agriculture is the regulatory body for invasive species within our state. Uh, what a restricted noxious weed, what that means is that, uh, parts may not be imported, sold, transported within the state. Uh, the only exception for transport is if it's for disposal. Uh, that is really the only guidance that is given by the state of Minnesota for its control. So, the prioritization is not something that we have as a, um, kind of a legal impetus, it's something that we have as a restoration impetus, so it's kind of based on our own prioritization of our areas. Uh, one thing to note is that buckthorn is highly prevalent in our region, not just our system. Um, pretty much every woodland in the near vicinity, both our system and around, uh, if it's not actively managed against it, it's impacted by buckthorn. Systemwide eradication is something that is a really high bar to lift, so it's important for us to prioritize where we, uh, where we make our efforts for maximum impact. Um, as I was talking about before, the nature of buckthorn, both its seeding and spreading, uh, make it really important that, uh, multi-year control efforts are, are prioritized versus kind of single effort, uh, cutting events. I feel like, um, working in the industry that I've worked in as long as I have, I've seen a lot of projects fail, because people will find, like, a bucket of money, cut all the buckthorn, leave it for 10 years, and you have exactly what you had when you started. So, uh, we want to make sure that we're prioritizing long-term, sustainable, and, uh, successful efforts as we go. Um, one of the ways that we're doing that is we're pri- prioritizing our high-quality natural areas with our system, uh, especially as we're talking about staff work. Uh, for us, that means the managed natural areas, uh, which is about 400 acres of our, uh, identified natural areas within the park system. Um, and then also within that would be areas that we have kind of on the docket for inclusion within our managed natural area designation. Uh, it's also really important to have follow-up restoration beyond just the control, the cutting treatment of buckthorn. Uh, there's a lot of really good studies that the reintroduction of natives helps you suppress the ability of buckthorn to reestablish itself after you've removed it. So having that be a part of your management strategy, doing the full restoration of the site for its natural characteristics, uh, helps you control buckthorn in the long term. Uh, another tool in our toolbox is the incredibly dedicated volunteers we have within the system, uh, that do, uh, park service agreements with us, and, uh, we try to support them as best as we're able. Uh, a lot of times, what that means is when they cut brush for us, we'll pick it up. Uh, we also make sure that when they come across buckthorn that is beyond the scope of what a volunteer can do, that we realize that it's worth our time and effort to assist them with, with that. So anything that's generally over two inches or larger, we don't want volunteers to be cutting, so we do that for them, because I don't want to tell them that they can't do something, and then it just stays as a, uh, persistent problem. So, we work really well with volunteers on that section. Uh, so this document was included in the board agenda, and this is kind of an expansion of, uh, the points I was just making. Uh, this is something that we plan to include on the natural areas page of the NPRB website. Oh, there we go.
So kind of how this work ties back into our IPM policy is our, our IPM policy needs to be revised more frequently than it has in the past, and our target is to have it be revised every three years. The Minnesota Department of Agriculture updates the noxious weed list every three years. These updates, um, should trigger staff to make edits to our policy so that we meet the changes in our legal requirements, but also just industry best practices. Those are ever-evolving, um, so we need to keep our policy current and relevant to what's happening now. So based on kind of the current schedule of that noxious weed list update, our next targeted revision would be happening in quarter one of 2027, because in 2026, we should get the update to the noxious weed list. And with that, James and I and Jeremy are all available for questions.
Great, thank you so very much. Uh, Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, thanks for this. Um, I was trying to look at my phone for, somewhere in the world, there's a picture of me and a few of my high school friends for our AP Environmental Studies class. We, uh, our project for, a part of the year was to go to the hill behind Edina High School and clear out, like a, like a 50 by 50, or like 25 by 25 square foot area of buckthorn. And by the time we did that, there was almost nothing left, and we were exhausted, but it was, it put in my head how pervasive it is, so, you know, thank you for, for this. Um, you know, I, I admit, I didn't do my homework, I did not read the full, uh, buckthorn management, um, plan. Do we use any herbicide on it? Because I know that sometimes, if you cut it down and you put a little on, you can kill the buckthorn, doesn't come back, but then you're not, also not putting too much into the rest of, uh, the environment. I know our constituents get very concerned with that, but I think if we can do really concentrated topical approach, that could be, is, is that part of our, our strategy?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Olson. It's, it, it kind of depends on what we're targeting. I think for the, the really large buckthorn, it, it's prudent for us to use herbicide. Um, so we generally, we use cut stump treatments on those. And I think when we're talking about smaller buckthorn, it's not really worth, um, it's not worth the use of chemical for how much you'd be using, um, for treating little stems. So we, we try to take a, um, you know, the smallest impact approach to the use of herbicide. Um, when we're working with volunteers as well, we use a method that we call critical cutting. So sometimes you might go around the system and you'll see buckthorn cut three, four feet high. Um, and then the volunteers, what they do is, uh, several times throughout the season, will strip off the new growth, and there's a lot of really good evidence, and we've seen a lot of good results, that if you're diligent in doing that, the buckthorn will, will die within a season or two. Um, and then you can either cut the stump low, or if the roots decay, you can just kind of knock the thing over. So, we use both, uh, herbicide and non-herbicide methods for buckthorn control. Great, thank you for that.
Uh, Commissioner Schaefer. Vice Chair, sorry, Vice Chair.
I just want to say thank you for this work, um, Mr. Schaefer, and, um, your responsiveness to the community in this issue is something that matters a lot to many volunteers, and I know that you've got your work to do as a staff person as well, and so I appreciate your sensitivity and your encouragement of all those park stewards, and that means a lot. And, um, you know, your word of thanks to the volunteers, I really appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Um, if I could make a quick addition, I was doing a little bit of envelope math today. Uh, we were adding up the volunteer areas that specifically take place in woodlands, and I think we're, the volunteers are managing approximately 61 acres of woodland buckthorn for us, which I think is just phenomenal.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty amazing. So thanks for your encouragement of that.
Uh, Commissioner Mens?
Thank you. How many park stewardship agreements do we have with groups?
That's a question for our volunteer coordinator, so I'm going to guess for you. I think she has somewhere in the neighborhood of 90-something, do you know what that? Okay, they're not all buckthorn agreements, that's the general suite of park stewardship agreements. Um, the ones that we work with directly are going to be, uh, ones that are involved in natural areas. So those are the ones that I'm very familiar with and the people that we work with every day, but I also want to recognize that there are a lot of folks who are, uh, having these agreements that are not, uh, something that I interface with.
Are those able to be, um, it'd be, it'd be awesome to have a copy of one of those, just to kind of see how they work. I think that that's great that you're working, I really appreciated your statement around minimizing, um, the use of the herbicides. It really speaks that we're actually doing that and really trying to minimize the impact to your environment. Thank you for your work.
I'd like to ask a clarifying question. Uh, are you looking for a copy of a stewardship agreement? Or are you looking for, um, a write-up on how the critical cutting process works?
I, I'm looking for an example of a park stewardship agreement.
Okay.
With a group.
Got it. Um, I'm sure someone can provide you with an example, stewardship.
Sherri Brooks is the one who you should, should reach out to, she has all those.
So, uh, Assistant Superintendent Barrick, can you follow up with? Thank you, lovely, so you'll follow up and, and get a copy of a stewardship agreement shared out with the commissioners, so they can see what that looks like. Um, having filled one out myself for many, many years, uh, it's pretty straightforward, and, um, I would, I would guess the level of detail varies pretty widely, uh, between the various groups. Like, some people are gonna get really specific, they're gonna attach maps. Um, others are just gonna say things like, I work in this park, in this area that I've taken care of for 25 years. Um, so, so you're gonna see kind of, um, a broad swath of examples, and I think that's where it's so critical that we have staff, uh, that help manage those agreements, because they really get to know the people that are involved in organizing those groups, and making sure that they're getting the support they need, um, and the information they need to be helpful and not cause harm, um, through their work, so. Yeah, uh, not, oh, sorry. Uh, Commissioner Forney.
Thank you, Chair Musich. Um, thank you, um, for the report. I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot to brag, um, that yesterday, uh, yeah, yeah, yesterday, um, Eloise Butler, um, opened up, and it's been one of my traditions to be one of the first that's in there. Um, by the way, I saw the owl. The management that the, uh, Friends have been, I think it's Friends, anyway, Jim Proctor, et cetera, and everything like that. Um, I, I just, I need to shout out to them, it's just such amazing work. So basically, if I'm hearing you're saying, um, us buckthorn busters aren't using root slayers anymore, we're just lopping them nowadays, right?
Thanks, Commissioner Forney. Um, that's, you know, that's also kind of a complicated question. I think one of the things we're really trying to avoid is, um, excess erosion, so it's, it's really area-specific. I think we really try to guide volunteers away from, um, any sort of uprooting or digging on hillsides, any slopes like that. In general, the, what you might have seen, some of the, um, like the buckthorn pullers, the machines that pull them out completely by the roots, I think we're trying to get away from those, just because even in flat conditions, we are seeing a ton of soil disturbance, and we, we think that there's, it's likely that there's more detriment than, than help by doing it that way. Um, in some conditions, we are still doing some root slayers, which is a little more targeted shovel, which, uh, severs the roots directly at the base. Um, but again, that's mostly going to be in areas that it's an appropriate, uh, tool. So, we try to have as big a toolbox as we can when we're dealing with buckthorn, and, um, that's definitely a tool that's used in the right conditions.
Uh, thank you for sharing it, I love using the root slider, but, um, no, I mean, particularly along the riverfront, or shoreline and everything, or the hill, anyway. Yeah, definitely, we can't be doing those types of things, so I'm really pleased that we're finding these alternative methods. And this is not a part of anything in your report and everything? Do you guys have any reports on jumping worms?
Um, that's, that's one that I think we're kind of deferring to the state on at this point. It recently got designated, so there's going to be some regulation about the movement of material, and especially in the nursery trade, what they're selling. Um, I think they, that's where a lot of the regulation is gonna come from. I don't believe there's any, um, current effective controls known for jumping worms. So our primary objective is to not create more of a problem than we already have, and to contain where they already exist, and try to hold them to that spot.
Thank you, appreciate it, and I'll just brag to everybody, trilliums are out in Eloise. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Forney. I do not have anything else to add, I, am I missing a light? No, okay. Uh, I, I appreciate you taking the time to come and speak to us on this topic this evening, and, uh, look forward to hearing in 2027, uh, what needs to be updated in the policy. And, uh, yeah, thank you so much. With that, I will declare the Operations and Environment Committee adjourned.
All right, at 8:29, I call to order the Recreation Committee. Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Alper. Here. Commissioner Mens.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Vice Chair Musich. Chair Ruck, Rucker.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, can I have somebody move the, the approval of the agenda?
Still moved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, that passes, can I have somebody approve the minutes?
Uh, Commissioner Mens has moved the minutes of March 19th, 2025.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes, uh, we have one item, uh, report item for a presentation from the Rec Department.
Thank you, Chair Rucker and Commissioners. We are here to give you an update on the new citywide youth program discount, um, fee structure, and its implementation. We are giving you, um, hard copies because of the little glitches, we got a little panicky, but Deputy Ringgold had things under control, so you get to have both. You can look at that or look at the presentation on the screen. I'm gonna talk about where we were before we got to where we are, so. So as you know, this was a budget goal that, um, really Commissioner Musi, or I'm sorry, Vice President Musich brought forward during the 2024 budget preparation, and all of the board members, uh, supported, and staff supported. And the overall goal was to implement a new citywide strategy to replace the current options that were going on, which was the free program sites, the fee assistance, and the scholarship program. So it was very confusing to families with having three options, and we all know, we've talked, I think, at length about some of the, some of the challenges with the free program sites, and that they weren't other places. Uh, another part of the goal was to ensure youth programs are accessible to all families throughout the city. And it also states that, uh, we need to develop a metrics for determine efficacy of the new fee structure. So I just want to review what the three buckets were before this new system. It was the free program sites, which were at 17 sites, they were based on areas of concentrated poverty. Any youth under 17 that registered at those sites could get programming for free. We did have a lot of people moving around the system to go to those sites and. We did have a lot of people moving around the system to go to those sites and get their free programs. There also was the fee assistance program, which is the longest-standing program that we've had. And that was, we also called it fee waivers. And those were for the instructional part of a program. There was the requirement to complete an application and provide lots of documentation based on income. And then a few years ago, we developed the scholarship program, which had some funding set aside for it. And the scholarships were available to anyone who qualified through the application process and paperwork, same as the fee assistance. But people could qualify for up to three hundred dollars per person per year. So we took those three. And here's an example of some of the documents we required. And the person in the picture is probably how a lot of the families felt. So, so now we're going to talk about the great system that has been developed by staff led by our Director of Youth and Recreation Center Programs, Nicole Hernandez, and our Service Area Manager over Southwest, Steve Thompson, also has done some really great tools for the staff to be able to, to implement this program. And there's other staff and team members that have been helpful in our organization and outside of our organization. And Nicole will be thanking them at the end. So I am going to turn it over to Director Hernandez to walk you through the new program implementation and how it's going.
Chair Rucker, Commissioners, as we consider changes to our fee structure, it was really important for us to, to ground our approach in equity and fairness. This slide, and with the rationale outlines our rationale or justification for the new fee structure. First, eliminating assumptions that certain parts of the city aren't able or willing to pay based on where they live. Areas of concentrated poverty can change over time with some neighborhoods transitioning out of high poverty levels while others may become newly concentrated with poverty. And then the discounted fee structure will not only relieve financial barriers for areas of concentrated poverty, but help families citywide. While we absolutely want to reduce financial barriers in high poverty areas, we also acknowledge that families across the city, regardless of location, can face financial strain. This model ensures more inclusive access for all residents. So this slide highlights our new fee structure model, which ensures greater access to programs for all families in Minneapolis. To start, all forty-seven recreation centers now offer program discounts. This means no matter where a family lives, they have access to financial support if needed. The structure is tiered, starting from the full program fee and scaling down to discounts of twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, and a hundred percent. Our goal is to remove financial barriers while still supporting the sustainability of programs. Now that we've outlined the rationale of the fee structure, we'll walk through the process. We've simplified the process into three easy steps. This ensures flexibility and choices regardless of where a family lives. First, a family would select a youth program at any recreation center location. Next, they would select the full price or one of the discount options that aligns with the household income. This approach allows families to self-select what they can afford based on household income and family size with no additional documentation as barriers. So previously, as Mimi showed, there was a lot of documentation that families had to submit to even be able to qualify for fee assistance. And then finally, they would just proceed to check out and enjoy NPRB programs. So now I'm going to pass it off to Steve and he's going to go through some of the data to give you guys some of the feedback.
Chair Rucker, Commissioners, sorry if I talk really fast. I'm really excited about numbers and it's late in the evening. So we're going to get after it real quick. So what you're looking at, I don't know if you guys remember the, the map with all the trees indicating the free sites and the non-free sites in the previous proposal. We have that here as well. The dark blue trees are indicating the previously free sites. And the green tea-less trees are indicating the non-free sites in previous years. The numbers attached to all these trees are the, the percentage of the discount received by registrants on average at each rec center. We're forty-two days into the registration process for summer. As you can see, families are accessing the discounts all over our city. And, and it is working. So that piece is really important. But also what you see here is that families are also paying for our programs. They value our programs. They're seeing the quality of programming available at the center nearest them. And they're accessing it without a transportation barrier. So I think we're, we're hitting a few things as far as removing that financial barrier, but also removing a transportation barrier at the same time. If we zoom out, we look at per service area, this is again the average percentage of discount received by the registrants in each service area. So just for, to put it in plain, plain terms, if we have ten registrants pay the full price of a program and then ten registrants take a hundred percent discount, the average obviously would be fifty percent. So this is not, they're not, this is just, this isn't the amount, the amount of people, the percentage of people that are taking discounts. This is the average discount taken for each, each service area. I want to jump into the sustainability. I think one thing that we are really mindful of is that this is a big risk. It's our busiest season. And, and we have the most amount of programs, the most amount of money and revenues generated during the summer. And so we were really mindful of, is this going to negatively impact our high-revenue generating parks? And then overall, our overall budget, or how is this going to go? And so we're forty-two days in. And these are just three examples that, yes, you can say we, we kind of cherry picked three examples. But I wanted to give you the, some of the more high, high generating, revenue generating parks as an example. So Lake Hiawatha, when I compare the youth programs, not including youth sports, not including adult programs, when I compare the youth programs revenue generated in twenty twenty-four, they have already surpassed that. They're a hundred and forty-one percent of last year's total revenue for youth programs last summer. And their average discount that's been taken is eight percent. So the, the residents and the participants that are registering are, a lot of them are paying full price for these programs. It's a testament to the staff. It's a testament to the people that are, the residents of Minneapolis, that they really believe in our programs. Linden Hills, in my service area, Southwest, yep, that's where we, that's where I go. So the revenue there is already ninety-three percent of only forty-two days in of all of last summer. And the average discount there is sixteen percent. And then Northeast, revenue for youth programs at Northeast Rec Center is already at ninety-four percent of the entire total for last summer. But that's even giving a twenty-three percent discount. So even with the twenty-three percent discount on average given, we're still almost at a hundred percent of last year's total, only forty-two days into our registration season. So I know that this is a, this is a quick snapshot of, of the places that it's working really well. We're excited to bring you all the data when we get it the end of the summer and we're able to compare all of twenty twenty-four and all of twenty twenty-five summers and really put it all together to tell the story of how this is working. But so far, this is, this is going way better than we even imagined at this point. So we're really excited. I think it was a, a really cool, it's kind of a social experiment, right? How are people going to respond? Are they going to pay for the programs that we're putting out there? Do they, do they value our programs? And overwhelmingly, they do. So we will go into the next piece about how we got this whole thing started.
So, well, Steve and I are going to tag team a little bit, but I wanted to kind of start off with the first part of it. So this phase, the initial startup phase, was the beginning of the new youth discount fee. We really took in consideration, we had focus groups, we talked internally just what some of the barriers or challenges were that, that some of the rec supervisors were seeing in the field. And then we also met a lot with community ed. And I think they were really a huge support because they were already doing something similar in community ed. And they really were a partner in this and in collaboration, let us know about challenges and successes that they had along the way. Steve Alexander, who works with community ed, came to some of our focus group meetings. Him and I met multiple times, one-on-one, just to kind of talk about some of the things that we were trying to work out together. So with that, that was the first piece, was just really thinking about what were some of the challenges? What were some of the barriers? How can we make sure and ensure that we're making this a really smooth process for community as well? And as well as for the staff, too. Then the next piece was the process design. After gathering ideas and identifying needs, we translated those ideas into a workable design. Jamie Neldner, who works with our ActiveNet, was really, really extremely helpful with this piece. He helped us walk through the registration process and really gave it us an example of how families would, as they go through the process of registration, what would work and what would not work. And so we, he helped a lot with that support, supported us along that piece. And I know you were going to talk about something else.
Yeah, so the next thing after we figured out the ActiveNet piece and how we could make it the most user-friendly for both staff and for the residents, we, we knew that we had to fix our, we had to, we had to fix our fee structure essentially. We had to, we had to standardize it. We had to actually figure out what the actual cost of running these programs was so that we could actually put in front of the residents, this is how much it costs to run these programs. If you can pay that, great. If you need a discount, great. But either way, we're going to let you know what the actual cost is. And so, so we built a fee calculator that, that the rec supervisors had to put a lot of variables in for every single fee-based program for this summer. They put a lot of work into it, the program leads and the rec supervisors, so I just want to shout them out. We had a whole database to collect all that information. And the managers, my colleagues, got together and we, we started finding some similarities with programs. We started doing market analysis on other cities of what price points they were at. And so we determined some fee alignment standards to, to align throughout the city that we don't have this program over here for fifty dollars and this is, and the same thing over Southwest is a hundred. We wanted to align that throughout the entire city. If this is what it costs to run the program here, it's the same as over here or similar. And so let's go ahead and align those fees. One caveat to that is there's a lot of volunteer programs that, let's say, a volunteer yoga instructor wants to continue offering it for free in their neighborhood, absolutely, we're not going to attach a fee to that. So there are going to be a few things that would not be aligned with the fees. But for the most part, we were able to do some fee alignment stuff across the city with all of our programs. The next piece of that is obviously promoting it. So publishing the new fee structure online, promoting it to the residents, we worked really closely with our communications team. They did an incredible job of getting it out in a short amount of time. And, and all of this really was a quick, quick turnaround to figure out for all the, all the new fees, all the fee alignment stuff and the, and the marketing of it, it was a very quick turnaround. And so I just want to shout out all the staff. We, we really worked as a collective team to, to put this into place before March fifth, when we launched. And yeah, I just want to, I just want to say that there was a whole team effort. One thing I just wanted to mention was that in my, when we were doing the market analysis and trying to figure out if this is happening anywhere else in the country, obviously, we took a lot of stuff from community ed. We worked very closely with, with them. But as far as Parks and Recreation, we can't find another model in the entire country that is doing this. So Portland's the closest one. They have very similar, but they have a discount where it's twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, and then ninety. So everybody has to at least pay ten percent of a program. We're the only ones in the country that I can find, and for the record, I might be wrong. So if I'm wrong, that's fine. But this is, this is cutting-edge stuff and really cool to create, to just break down barriers and create more access for all of our young people in Minneapolis.
And just before we close out and before we wrap up, I just want to take a moment to express the appreciation to everyone who played a role in making this new youth discount fee. Like Steve said, we had a quick turn, very, very quick turnaround to make this happen. And first, we want to thank Mimi, you know, just initially, thank you for trusting in us and providing us the autonomy to design a process and for providing thoughtful feedback when we came to you. And then along with that, Steve has been my thought partner in this, my counterpart. And he, you know, his development of this program calculator and just helping with the alignment of fees would not even make this possible. So all his work with that, just putting this together was amazing. And all the training he did with the rec supervisors as well, too, which was really, really great. I can't thank the service area managers enough. I mean, you can have a thought, you can have an idea, but it takes the people who, to put things in, implement and put things in place. And so the service area managers understood how important this was. And they really provided the support to their teams, provided all the work behind the scenes. So I wanted to take a moment to just say thank you to them, which is Newman Thomas, which is for the, he represents the North Service Area. Eric Cherlin, he's detailed right now for the Northeast-Southeast Service Area. Of course, Steve Thompson for the Southwest Service Area. Paul Jaeger for the Upper South Service Area. And Anne Heath for the Lower South. Again, I know we said this, but the rec supervisors and program leads are really truly the people who made this possible. They took time and we have like three hundred programs that they had all put in to ensure that we were aligning. And if you guys see the spreadsheet, it's very, very long of all the programs that we just went through and tried to align. Also, I want to thank Jamie Neldner. He really went through from the ActiveNet perspective just to make sure that we were serving the, the community and making sure the system was in sync with the ActiveNet piece of it, too. And again, I know Steve Alexander is not here, but he was truly a partner in collaboration of helping us get this off the ground as well. And I think even above the revenue, I think when you look at that map to see that all these families, like every recreation center had someone that accessed this discount is the whole purpose of this, this whole project. So to see that and on top of the revenue that came in, it, it really truly was a team effort to make all this successful. So with that being said, I will, we will take questions now if anyone has.
Vice Chair Musich.
Thank you, Chair Rucker. So I appreciate the, the comprehensive look at the whole city. I, I'm curious if, I mean, I know we saw that one rec center is bringing in a hundred and forty-one percent of its revenue from the previous year and others are below. Are we anticipating that overall, over across the entire city, that we will be seeing equivalent or higher revenue numbers than we did in twenty-four?
Yeah, so for the forty-two days in, it looks, it's trending that way.
Okay.
But we also know that these numbers are going to change, right? The people that plan their summers in March and April maybe have more capacity to pay, and so we recognize that. So we'll see how that goes. However, those aren't the only three that are close to a hundred percent. So Lindo Farmstead, for instance, is already at two hundred percent. It's just a smaller site. So I just want to put one of the higher generate, revenue generating sites on there. Shout out to Mitch Walker with two hundred percent of last year's revenue. That's awesome. But so there are, there's, there's a myriad of results. I think when you look at the seventeen free sites from previous years, anything that they bring in is a bonus, right? And so I think, one, I haven't, I haven't got the table all the way done for the twenty twenty-four because we have to take all the recs, the youth sports out and all the adult programs. So it just takes a little bit more time. I'm about halfway done with that. My service area, I think we're already at like eighty-nine percent as a total service area of last year's total. So it's, it really is trending that direction that we would actually surpass last year's revenue for the summer programs for youth. Yep.
Okay, that's great to hear. I'm, I'm glad to see that this has the potential of being a, a long-term sustainable option for us to keep providing to families in Minneapolis. And it really gives me hope that when we start our budget discussions in a couple of weeks, that my colleagues will be supportive of us exploring, rolling, expanding this program to also include adult programs as well. I did notice that we are still prompting people to give to the scholarship fund when they're enrolling for programs that are not youth. And I, because I don't, I don't enroll kids in youth programs anymore. I only enroll people in adult programs. Is that? Is that fund still open? And what demographics receive those funds now that we're not providing them to youth?
Chair Rucker, Vice President Musich, we don't have that data this evening, but we can get that working with the Finance Department.
Okay, that'd be great. Because I just noticed, as I tried to find like links to figure out how someone would apply for it, they're all dead. They all give you a four oh four error. So you can donate. There's lots of places to do that, but there's no way to actually apply that I could find on our website. So someone can look into that and then circle back.
Thanks for letting us know that.
And then the other thing that I wanted to ask is if it'd be possible to get Power BI dashboards to allow us to have some additional insight into this data at some point? I understand that that's maybe a big ask right now, but I just find it helpful to be able to, you know, play with the numbers myself to get a better feel for the impacts it might be having or where we have.
Yep. Vice President Musich and Chair Rucker, yes, we will try to work on getting that information.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Meads.
Thank you, Chair Rucker. This is really good. This is really exciting. So this doesn't mean that, so all of the youth sports registrations that have happened over the past forty-two days, that does not include that. But we've already gotten numbers from there that the revenue is pretty good on that as well. Yeah, I, as, as you know, I'm, I'm not always the most sensitive critic. And this is amazing work. And I, and I think that I really, really wanna congratulate you all on really implementing a program that respects all families' abilities to pay and also the realization that sometimes the value of a program is higher or lower and that we can self-select those things. Like we can be trusted as citizens and as program participants to make that determination. And now we, as park employees, can make determinations on how we, you know, can predict revenue and expect more, or figure out how we might be able to encourage more people to, to understand the value of these programs. Really, really, really excellent work. I'm really encouraged by this. I think, I share Vice President Musich's hopes that we're setting ourselves up for a really strong foundation to really change recreation and how we value these programs and how we understand how the people of the city value these programs. So really encouraged by this. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you so much, Chair Rucker. I just wanna echo what's being said. I love when something new has come up and it's clear that everyone worked really well together, and you came up with an amazing plan. And I was like, this is, already feels like a huge success to me, and we're just rolling it out. So I just wanted to, to thank you both and thank everybody who worked on this. And I, I do think that, you know, when it just, when you ask, first of all, when we ask you guys to help solve this idea that we probably didn't do very well the first go-round of like, we wanna help families who can't afford things, blah, 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 right? You took it and really found it, an amazing solution. And I, I look forward to seeing how this is gonna work out in the future. Thank you for all your hard work.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you for letting me speak. I am not on this committee, so I appreciate it. So one of the problems that we identified with the, you know, free sites was that folks would be signing up for there, and they're not in that community, or they don't show up. Have we seen that that problem is not happening with this new structure? Or do we have any data or understanding yet?
Chair Rucker, Commissioner Olson, we won't know that until summer because they won't, the programs haven't started yet. However, I think one thing that's very clear is that people are able to sign up in the neighborhood that they choose as long as the program that they, that they live in, right? As long as the program that they wanted to sign up for is near them. So it's definitely, it's definitely trending towards, yes, we're able to access that program closer to home. But we won't know the turnout data until we go through.
Premature question, I suppose.
Chair Rucker, Commissioner Olson, and that will also, we didn't really talk about the evaluation, but we are, have, we do have an evaluation plan. So those can be some questions that we do at the end of this when we talk to families to see access and if that helped with that piece as well, too.
Awesome, yeah, that was definitely gonna be my second question about, yeah, making sure we have that. So that's, that's great. And yeah, I kind of had a similar, you know, thought, you know, it was kind of an inelegant thing that was given to us from the prior board, but it was done from kind of a good place. And, you know, I think it can go to show that sometimes when we're talking about kind of more ambitious policy, maybe stuff that's, things that we haven't really thought of before, sometimes we have a tendency to kind of reject that. But I think in this case, it's shown that if we didn't have those, that last board kind of make that decision to start heading us down this path, we wouldn't be here at all. So something really fruitful has come from that. And so I think I would just like to acknowledge that and thank the previous board for, for what they did there, even though it was kind of touch and go for us here. It seems like we've, we've come upon a brighter path.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I had a question. If staff anticipate expanding this, how long will we wait? Is this kind of quote pilot? Would it be two years? You know, and, and do you anticipate the opportunity to expand into other age groups beyond eighteen and under?
Chair Rucker, Commissioner Schaefer, I think right now, we were, we were planning on doing a debrief after summer, like internally as a team and just say, you know, like kinda what our next steps are from that. So I think as we start thinking about plans and how we expand and how we move forward, I think those are definitely at the table. I don't know as far as the turnaround right now. I think we were really focused on getting this piece off the ground and being successful. And I feel after we even get, you know, information back from families and access, some of those things will probably come up that we can address as well, too. So again, yet to come, still to be determined. But we are, you know, I think that's something that could be on the table as well, too.
Thank you.
Superintendent Van Ghor.
Chair Rucker, thank you for acknowledging me. Just wanted just to say, I don't say very often, but I was, you know, one of the best decisions I made in my role was, and Mimi knows this, you know, I was eyeballing her for a while there when I was making a lot of the changes in the organization. And one of the things I keep telling Mimi is to look back at a lot of things that she's accomplished and some of these legacy things. And so, you know, and she's a very, very humble person. She doesn't like to get a lot of acknowledgement. I mean, I'm not kidding you. But very, very proud of her. And then, of course, I try to brag that I, you know, signed, you know, Nicole's, you know, hiring letter. But of course, Mimi was the one that did allow the work behind it to bring Nicole in and see the amazing work she's doing. Steve has been just, just great in stepping up here, and this team has been great. And you named all the people that are doing some wonderful work, but these things take time. I mean, you know, we've been talking about recreation. When I came in here, one of the mandates that I had was to move recreation to a particular place. One of the things I had to do is get the right people in the place, and Mimi was that person stepping in here. And it was a big deal.
All right, President Abinik.
But one last thing, too, I wanna say is that, I know there's someone sitting in the room here that is, is just always been so patient, is here. And it can, someone, can you at least say who this wonderful person is here? Because sometimes you see someone sitting in the room, and you wonder, who's this person? Sits here every day, and sitting with, sitting with us in centralized registration, taking notes. I mean, really just been just a wonderful addition to our organization. And sometimes you don't see all the people that do, like, one of the words that Jennifer used before I was taking is the sausage-making that goes in the back of the work. And we have such wonderful staff in this organization. But I wanted to acknowledge, if you could at least introduce yourself.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Keith Ricker. I'm Administrative Assistant for Athletics and Recreation. It's an honor to be here and being, working in the programs that I'm working on. Nice to meet you all.
Yeah, it's good to see you. Well, yeah, that's all I wanted to say, just again, I'm just really proud of this group. And I know we have a short amount of time here. I know Mimi's gonna be doing some amazing things, so we're gonna miss her. But we have a lot more to talk about Mimi, but just really grateful for her leadership, the leadership that this team is bringing, because they're just following, you know, really the path and the direction, the vision that Mimi's been bringing and we've been bringing together. So thank you all, and just wanted to acknowledge that, so thank you.
All right, President Abinik.
Yeah, and I should not be going over those last words of the superintendent, but I did put my light on, so. I would, I guess I would just also just add my voice here. Thank you for calling me. I'm not on this committee, but to thank you. And it's very evident to me, there's a lot of subject matter expertise on this team. Because what you're doing, I, I don't know, I can't do it, but it's very clear. And the, and the gold medal and all of those things, Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board knows how to deliver recreation. And good job to this board, I think, redirecting some of the, maybe the, the less, the less-formed idea of the past approach into something that's, I think, going to be fiscally sustainable and maybe a model for other cities to follow. So thank you, thank you all, and thank you, Superintendent and team, for hiring such expert staff. Big deal, that's a big deal.
I don't see any more lights. Yeah, just for me to add, you know, you guys are doing a great job. Continue doing what you're doing, because we're in the economy now where people worrying about, you know, getting their next meals and groceries and things like that, and this comes in hand. Just keep, you know, continuing to move forward, you know, with your great work. So that's all I have to say. So at nine zero three, I adjourn the Recreation Committee.